We're live.
Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the role.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. De Arujo?
Present.
Ms. Lo Para? Ms. Lau?
Present.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neill? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the December 15th meeting link. The agenda, presentations, and equity impact statements have been translated in all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves and providing Zoom instructions, we will activate the interaction icon, the globe, at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. Will our Spanish interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Espanol?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, school committee members, distinguished guests. My name is Juan Bernal. I am one of the simultaneous Spanish interpreters assigned for this meeting. We will be taking turns with my colleague Luz for simultaneous interpreting purposes. I will now proceed to explain how to access the interpretation icon in Spanish. Muy buenas noches para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy uno de los interpretes simultáneos asignados para la reunión de hoy. Para poder accesar el icono de la interpretación, busquen el globo redondo que aparece en la parte baja de la pantalla y hacen un clic en español para seleccionar español como su idioma de preferencia. De igual manera, si se están conectando de un celular, una tableta, o un iPad, busquen los tres puntos que aparecen en la parte superior derecha de sus pantallas. Seleccionen español como su idioma de preferencia. Thank you very much. Next interpreter may proceed. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Luz. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Luz. En estos momentos no tengo acceso a la cámara, pero para saludarlos y dejarles saber que estaré haciendo la interpretación simultánea con Juan Bernal. Estamos disponibles. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Will our Haitian Creole interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sergio Santillar, Haitian Creole interpreter. No puede ser a por mitin encore, pour nous avoir si moi même avec nadie, cap pas suréinterpretation pour après-midi. Et moi il faut, il faut comprendre que moi-même, moi-même, m'a continué jusqu'à cette 30 et n'a déjà pas pris. C'était 30 pour 10 heures. Et sous besoin Zoom, instruction pour entrer dans conversation. Ou appris qu'on a un bail quand là, ou approuvé, ayant, ayant, c'est, bagay, ou appris solé, et tu vas cabanquer. Tout ça a besoin d'y, ou appartiennent, et nous très contents ni moyen à des, nous très contents pour nous c'est vous après-midi. Merci beaucoup.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bonsoir, tout le monde. Nom c'est Nadé. Comme Sergio fait d'inom, moi c'est créant interpréter. Donc Sergio fait pas nos modalités pour réunion à soi. Donc si n'ont des questions, pas biais, mettez notre chat là. Merci et bonne écoute.
Thank you. Will our Cabo Veriano interpreters please?
Good evening. My name is Jose. I'm gonna be with my partner tonight, Kiana. We're gonna have a Cabo Verde interpreter. Buenoite. My name is José. Hoje, mi compañera Kiana, salí para no hacer nuestras interpretaciones. Si os está con desktop, desktop computers, por y baila, na parte, un parte que ten globo. Na aquella parte globo, ahora que os calca, la, después, os está selecciona, que lengua de Cabo Verde, pues, si más escutar. Si os teni tablet o celular phone, móvil, ten que el traspinguinio, na aquella traspinguinio que se la, ta calca. Ahora que vou calca, lógate, ero diferente de opción, na aquella opción, butas go de lengua, na lengua, butas selecciona Cabo Verde. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Kiana Andrade, and I will be one of the Cabo Verde interpreters for tonight. Buen dia, todo alguien. Mi nombre es Kiana, y hoy salí mi compañera José, por y baila, hacer que interpretes on la Creole. Gracias.
Thank you. Will our Cantonese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Terry, and I will be your Cantonese interpreter for the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Anna. 大家好，我係你哋嘅另外一个翻译，係广东话嘅翻译。咁好似Anna咁讲啦，咁我哋一阵喺嗰个翻译频道见啦。唔该曬。Thank you. Back to Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will our Mandarin interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Wei. Tonight, me and Tina will be your Mandarin interpreters.
Thank you. My name is Tina, and I'm Wei's partner for tonight. 晚上好。那么Wei已经介绍过了，我是Tina。我们两个人会三十分钟一换，一会儿见。祝您今晚过得愉快。Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will our Vietnamese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name is Vi, Vietnamese interpreter. Xin chào quý vị. Vi và Vi sẽ là thông dịch của quý vị trong buổi tối hôm nay. Nếu mà cần tiếng Việt, xin bấm vào hỏa cầu và chọn ngôn ngữ tiếng Việt, chúng tôi sẽ cung cấp thông dịch liên tục cho các anh chị. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vi. I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for tonight's meeting. Xin chào quý vị. Tôi và chị Vi sẽ là người thông dịch viên của quý vị và của tôi hôm nay. Cảm ơn rất nhiều. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our American Sign Language interpretation interpreters please introduce yourselves?
We have three ASL interpreters tonight. There's Katie, Lucy, and Sharon.
Thank you. Thank you all for assisting us this evening, and thank you to all of the BPS staff behind the scenes who also provide support for our virtual meetings to run smoothly. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for both public comment periods closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you were signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourselves so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. I want to welcome our alternative student representative Tiffany Lau, who is filling in for Ms. Mercer this evening. Welcome, Tiffany. We're delighted to have you with us, and I want to wish Ms. Mercer a very happy birthday today as well. Thank you. We begin tonight by saying farewell and thank you to two committee members. The terms of Dean Harden Coleman and Onani De Arujo will expire in January, and both have decided not to seek reappointment. I'd like to take a few moments to thank both of them, and then I will open it up to the superintendent and fellow members for comments. Dean Harden Coleman was first appointed to the school committee in 2013. Over the years, he has served the district in many key roles, including three years as the committee's vice chair, co-chair of the mayor's external advisory committee on improving school choice, a member of the opportunity and achievement gaps task force, and co-chair of the school quality work group. Dr. Coleman has also led the superintendent's annual evaluation process, and on behalf of the kid committee, for that, I am very grateful. With his keen focus on data and accountability, Dr. Coleman has pushed us to become a more outcome-driven organization with a singular focus on improving student achievement. While we will miss his valuable perspective as a committee member, we're delighted that Dr. Coleman has agreed to continue as a member of the opportunity and achievement gaps task force and the school quality working group. Dr. Coleman, would you like to say a few words?
I was not fully prepared for that, but I would, you know, the things that rumble around in my mind is what a great important role this committee plays for the city. And I know there are a lot of things, a lot of things that people would want more of us at different times, but are the role we play in selecting the superintendent, evaluate the superintendent, making sure that the positive procedures are establishing strategic visions, and that positive procedures fitted to them is critical to the city. And we get to do that in a way that is not, I'm not saying embroiled in trying to meet constituent needs directly. It's a representative group. So we're able to think first about what do the kids of Boston need, and how can we help the adults in the world align to that. It's been an honor to serve with all of you and the previous members of the board. I want to, you know, I deeply appreciate the way that Chairman, Chairperson Robinson has stepped in. But I want to take a few minutes. What's been a lot of my mind is to recognize what an incredible value that Michael O'Neill has played for this district over much longer than most people could do. His wisdom, his willingness to work with all constituents. He shows up at multiple schools and multiple events. He has engaged the mayor and his chair. He guided us through some very difficult transitions around superintendents and changes in mayors. His work with the Council of Great City Schools is superlative. So I do not want to waste my last moments on this board without recognizing what a great civic leader he is and how the system facilitates that type of leadership in this world. So once again, I want to thank you. I am, I'm, I am, there are many things I'm gonna miss about being on the committee. Not everything, but there are many things I'm gonna miss. But most of all, the thing that I think that I would encourage us all to focus on deeply is supporting our superintendent and longevity of her time here. Because as I know, in the Opportunity Achievement Gap Task Force, we heard the chief of schools give a report on their goals to bring more coherence to the service of the schools. And I just, I just want to emphasize that that takes time. It takes consistency to build the coherence that we need to move forward. And I'm delighted to, as many of you know and everyone knows, I'm completely very supportive of the core vision of our superintendent and the work she is doing in difficult times to bring coherence. So what's gonna, I thank two mayors for allowing me to have this opportunity. Deeply grateful for working with a committed group of peers and deeply respect all the work that the, the, the staff and the teachers and the principals at BPS give to our kids that they deserve. And we all know that we are focused on improving the Quiber outcome. So thank you for this moment.
Thank you very much. Superintendent?
Madam Chair, I have some comments in my soup report, so I think I'll wait and let the committee members have a comment.
All right, fine. We can do that. Other members would like to speak at this time?
Madam Chair, does Mr. De Arujo want to say a few words?
Oh, okay. I'm gonna, I was gonna get there. I wasn't sure.
Apologize.
One and then do the other, but I can do that and we can do it all at the end. So, okay, thank you. We'll just, we'll do all the comments at one time then. All righty. I also want to thank, I also want to thank Onani De Arujo for his service. Mr. De Arujo joined the committee in February of this year, and in that short time, he committed himself fully to his work. His thoughtful questions have really pushed the committee's thinking. I'm grateful to Mr. De Arujo for stepping up as co-chair of the English Language Learners Task Force, which is such a critical role. And I know that balancing a demanding day job, supporting two young children at home, has been a challenge. So I'm very grateful to Mr. De Arujo for his service and look forward to him staying involved in BPS in a different way. Mr. De Arujo, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very appreciative and, you know, bittersweet evening. I'll congratulate Dr. Coleman and thank him as well for, you know, the significant service to our city. For me, in my short tenure, it's been a whirlwind. It doesn't feel like 10 months. It feels like a lot longer. And I'm sure it's, you know, for all of us, it's felt that way. But I do want to say thank you to my colleagues, to the superintendent, to the staff. I'll always be supporters of our educators, our staff, the volunteers that make, you know, the education of our kids possible. And while I'll be in a different capacity post-January 3rd, you know, I do want to continue supporting, especially, I'll continue with the EL efforts as well, supporting, supporting the task force, working with our staff. I'm very grateful to, you know, the addition of staff that the superintendent has succeeded in doing. I think we're moving in many ways in the right direction. I look forward to working, you know, working closely and continue working closely on those issues and also with our, with our mayor. Want to say thank you, you know, my employer, my now former, former CEO Manny Lopes, who's now going to be the former chair of BPHC, very much one of the executives of the East Boston Health Center to give back to the city of Boston. And he made it possible for me to, to take this role. You know, when I visit schools, and I never got to my goal of, you know, visiting, or even close to visiting all of our schools, or maybe one day I will. But, you know, it's an hour and a half or so a day, and it's a workday. And my employer has really embraced that, and I'm grateful for that. Grateful to my kitchen cabinet of advisors who helped me get up to speed quickly on a number of issues. And of course, I have to thank my daughter, who has let me use her room for these, these meetings. And it's kind of how extraordinary it is that, you know, we're having this important business out of our bedrooms and remotely speaks, you know, speaks to the time. I do also want to say, I was very proud to be the first East Boston resident to be appointed in history, actually, the appointed committee. And I heard from the nominating panel, which is really, really good news, that since my appointment in February, and there was some, some media, you know, in our neighborhood, we've had the highest number of applicants for, you know, we've had a number of openings and coming from East Boston that we've ever had before. That to me says, you know, representation matters. So for all of us here that coming from different perspectives and backgrounds, and when folks in the community see, see, you know, themselves in you, that's, that's really important and very, very powerful. So, so thank you all again to everyone. And while I won't be present at these meetings, I will be working with many of you going forward in a different role. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to open it up to members for comments.
Onani, I want to jump in. I want to thank you for the passion and precision to the questions you bring to the table that you drive us to think more carefully about the impact of decisions we make, and you're willing to go that next level of questions. That's so that we have to, when we come to a decision, we have to fully own many of the implications. I think that's a remarkable, very important part of what a high-quality civil servant does. And I want to thank you for that time and appreciate the time with you and hope that once we're being more social, we can find some time to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Madam Chair, thank you for this. First of all, to Mr. De Arujo, thank you. I'm sorry it's such a short time for you on the committee. I fully understand. We did have a chance to talk, and I know the pressures of work and small children, particularly for the approach that you took to be in on the committee in your months on it. You know, I would get reports back often of, oh, Mr. De Arujo was out to visit our school. Well, he met with this parents group, or he met with this group, or that type of thing. You were, you really took the role very seriously. I've enjoyed the work we've done together, in particular around risk management for the district and your supportive efforts we've been trying to do on that. And you pushing our thinking about, as I echo Dr. Coleman's comment about your, the approach you've taken to thinking through the issues deeply and pushing the thinking of the district is, is very helpful in moving the district forward. So I respect the decision you made because I know family, always family and work do come first. This is volunteer position for all of us. But your contribution has been felt, and thank you for agreeing to continue to work on the ELL, for agreeing to step up and co-chair it, but then also continue to work on that very important issue. And I agree, what has happened in East Boston for Boston Public Schools was a role model for the rest of our district. I was seeing so many great things going on there, how the elementary schools are working together, what's going on in the high school. As I told you yesterday, I was out to East Boston High recently with the head of school and his team. And, you know, the energy you feel in that building is incredible. So thank you for pointing that out. And Dean Coleman, this is, this is hard for me. You know, for many years, I called you the new guy on the committee. And now you're a grizzled veteran like Chair Robinson and myself. But the work that you have done for us, from co-chairing a superintendent's search to leading the effort around the superintendent's evaluation, to the assignment plan work, leading into the school quality framework. I learned so much from you over the years and listening to you in our quiet conversations, but also listening to the questions you would bring. I knew whenever there was an academic presentation by the district, and sometimes I would stop and struggle to dig through the weeds on it, and sure enough, I knew what was coming. Your immediate response was, I love this presentation, because you bring an academic background to your work. Thank you for the kind words you said about me, but I learned so much from you because you are truly the epitome of public service and servant leadership, as you taught me that expression. And, you know, I think some people know this, but not everyone does. Public service is in your blood. Your father, William Coleman, was Secretary of Transportation in an administration in Washington DC for President Ford and was an advisor. And, and, you know, I happen to have here his autobiography, which you may not be able to focus in on, Counsel for the Situation. An amazing book about your father, and that was public service you learned at the kitchen table, as I did. And you have lived and breathed that in your adopted city. So you may still root for a couple of sports teams that I disagree with. But your heart and your career and your family has been in Boston now. And I'm so thankful for the time you have put in to help all the 52,000 children in Boston Public Schools. You have made a difference, and it's been an honor to work with you, and I look forward to continuing to learn from you in the years to come.
Well, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. You'll be very happy to know that my first grandchild may be born in Boston in the same way that my, my brother was. So.
And then let's get him a Patriots bib early.
Let's get him a Patriots outfit early. It's gonna hurt me.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yo quiero decirle al señor Coleman que tuve poco tiempo de tratarlo, que valoro mucho tantos años de servicio que él ha tenido dentro del comité.
I want to just say something also. I just want to appreciate all of the work that he has done and also within the school committee.
Aunque tuve poco tiempo de tratarlo, siempre fue muy amable conmigo desde que llegué al comité y quiero decirle que muchas gracias y les deseo los mejores éxitos.
I just want to say, even though I only got to know him for a short period of time, he was very friendly and kind to me within the committee. I just want to thank him, appreciate him, and wish him all the best.
Ha tenido para mí el servicio que él ha hecho. Es un servicio valorado. Lo vi en algunas, tuvimos la oportunidad de estar en algunas reuniones y vi como él tiene esa preocupación por los estudiantes de las escuelas públicas. Y eso yo lo valoro.
I had the opportunity to see him doing some services, and I value that. I saw him, we saw some, we had some opportunities on some meetings, and I was, I was able to see how concerned he was about the students in the BPS.
Así que espero. Yo sé que no, no lo vamos a tener en el comité, pero sí yo sé que lo vamos a continuar teniendo preocupado y vigilante de las escuelas públicas.
I know that we won't have him in the school committee, but I know and I hope that he will continue to be concerned and vigilant for the students at BPS.
Y del señor, el señor Hernán y Araujo, recuerdo que cuando fui juramentada por la alcaldesa interina Kim Janey, él estuvo en mi juramentación.
And then for the other member, I remember when I was sworn in by the interim mayor, Kim Janey, I remember he was there.
Y él se acercó a mí y fue uno de las primeras personas dentro del comité que hizo una junta relacional, un uno a uno conmigo, y eso a mí valoro, valore mucho. Ese es su esfuerzo y que quisiera relacionarse conmigo siendo la primera hispanohablante que estaba en el comité.
I remember he approached me right after that, and we had a one-on-one. And I value that, that he made the effort. That was the first one who approached me to start a relationship, even though I'm the first one in the school committee that speaks Spanish.
Valoro que sus comentarios también. Tuvo muchas, muchos comentarios que lo tengo en mi corazón y lo valoro también porque sé que ha estado bien preocupado y ha estado bien pendiente. Específicamente, recuerdo en el caso de la extensión del sexto grado, como él estuvo empujando, llamando a la comité, llamando a la comisión para que esto fuera posible también, y valoro mucho ese esfuerzo que él hizo.
I also value the comments, and I will take all of that into my heart. It will stay with me in my heart. I value all of that. Because he was very concerned, and he was trying to look out about the extension of the sixth grade. And I value how he reached out to the committee and the commission, and I value all of that.
Definitivamente ustedes dos son personas buenas. Sigan siendo así. Sigan dando eso tan lindo que tienen porque, recuerden esto, servir es un privilegio.
And I definitely value, and you two are good people. And whatever you give, it's very beautiful. The service, remember that the service is a privilege.
Así que continúen sirviendo y donde quiera que estén, de que van a estar, con el corazón de ustedes, yo sé que va a estar con los estudiantes y las familias de Boston Public School, que al final del camino eso lo que queremos, el bienestar de nuestras familias y nuestros estudiantes. Muchas gracias y muchos éxitos a los dos.
I just, I encourage you to continue with your service. And I know that we all have this in our hearts, all the students, the families in the Boston Public Schools. we all have this in our hearts, all the students, the families in the Boston Public Schools. We're all looking out for the well-being of all of them and I just wish you all the success.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Lau?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to really appreciate the two committee members, Mr. Coleman and Mr. DeRusio and all their knowledge and experience that they've put into the committee and all the policies that we've all worked on over the years. I know I haven't been here that long, but I really appreciate getting to know you all and having your support in times when BSCAC was really in need of having that adult support and getting that advice from people who know what to do in situations like that and having type of mentor relationship with all of you guys. I remember BSCAC had like a one-on-one talk with Mr. DeRusio about everything. And we found out he really cares about the students and we really appreciated that talk and getting to know him on that type of level. Cause sometimes there is a disconnect between adults and the students in BPS and having that type of kind of talk about all the work that you hope to do in the future and how much you care about the students was really comforting and knowing that there are adults out there that really look out for us. I really appreciate that and I wish you all the best on your journeys.
Wonderful. Thank you. So again, I want to say to both of you, thank you for your service, Dr. Coleman and Mr. DeRusio. We're still living in strange COVID times and so we're not able to give you a proper farewell as we would like to. We have citations to mail out to you and we hope to be able to gather in person next spring for a more fitting tribute. Thank you both. Thanks. Well, now move on to the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 1st, 2021, school committee meeting as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Awesome.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Well, now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casellius.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for all of you who are joining us this evening. Tonight marks our last school committee meeting of the year. We've endured so much over the past calendar year and there's been a lot of challenges and trials that we've been all going through this past couple of years. But there's also been a lot of wins and a lot of progress that we've made. And there's a lot that I'd like to share with you as we reflect upon living and working through a pandemic and, you know, just kind of how tough it's been. Some of the things that have been quite challenging are the people we've lost, the plans that we've had to delay and the isolation that so many of us feel. We're all reassessing life in this moment as we navigate this tremendous time and time of change and chime of opportunity that's right in front of us. And it reminds us to embrace the little things that matter or the big things for that matter, like family, our sense of purpose, the friendships that we have, the community that we build with one another. It's just all so incredibly important as we move forward and we move forward together collectively as we live with this COVID pandemic. And as we try to continue to have in-person learning for our children, which we know is the best for them, despite the difficulty, despite the challenges, we are Boston Strong and we continue to pull together. We work through these uncertain times. And I just can't thank all of you for being a part of the BPS community. We're always better when we're unified. Today I want to talk about one of those people that we lost. Want to acknowledge the passing of Ron Johnson, a beloved BPS educator for 47 years. Mr. Johnson began his teaching career in 1977 at Charlestown High School and later worked at the Boston Trade, Dorchester High School and the Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. He became a guidance counselor in 1997, first at Boston High and he finished his career at Boston Community Leadership Academy in Hyde Park. Resistant to retirement because of the love of his work, Ron finally retired November 30th of 2020. He dedicated his life to his students and he's known to write recommendations with painstaking care and to give glowing remarks about all the success of his former students he encountered outside of the school hours. He was a quintessential embodiment of a servant leader. BPS is incredibly grateful for his commitment to bettering the lives of our students, of those colleagues that he stood by and his service to the district. He'll be missed, but he will also be remembered for the indelible legacy he left through his impression on his colleagues and students. Thank you, Ron, for everything that you've given. And I'll report, I'll now begin my report with a few district highlights and then share just a few updates. This fall, students at the Binka International Newcomers Academy, also known as Binka, made up of about 500 recent immigrants, were invited to take part in York Athletics Blank Canvas Shoe Design Competition. Before the contest, York Athletics surveyed the students to see what they knew about creativity and creative careers like marketing and shoe design. Many had never directly experienced a career in marketing or had awareness that this was something they could pursue as a career. After the contest, a new survey found awareness nearly doubled, bringing newfound interest in marketing and advertising-related careers among our students. Jean Dario, a Binka junior, who had never painted anything before, drew a landscape of his native country Haiti for the competition. And much to Jean's surprise, he won the competition. The winning design inspired the Frank by Jean Dario sneaker. Jean now sees a new career path for himself. He said, art is in my heart now. I would like to do more and learn more about art in the future, he said. And with a kickstart like this, his future is bright. The pre-sale for Jean's shoes has already ended, but you can still view and purchase the sneakers at YorkAthleticMFG.com. And by searching the Frank trainer, profits from the pre-sales placed by December 12th will go towards his college education. So hurry up. Let me say that again. YorkAthleticsMFG.com or you can search the Frank trainer. This story is an incredible testament to the power of the arts, creativity and the willingness to try something new despite your perceived ability or experience. We should all embody the courage that Jean has shown in our lives. Congratulations to Jean. Another really heartwarming story is marked by two or maybe three things in Boston that really do bring a lot of joy. And that is that we need generosity and we need caring. And those things are what we saw in Local 1952. This holiday season is also a time when we can step in and support everyone in such a tough year. So many of our community members are experiencing insecurity and by stepping up and giving and giving a hand, we can make such a difference. And our custodians of Local 1952 did exactly that. Last Friday, several members of the Local 1952 Union dropped off 12 boxes of toys for our students. Along with BPS Chief of Schools Cory Harris, I greeted them in the lobby and a bowling building to thank them for their kindness. The toys were turned over to Donna Lassus, who leads our family liaisons. Donna worked with the family liaisons to provide toys to families experiencing housing insecurity and families who had contacted the school seeking support to get gifts for their children. Every day our custodians open our schools, they keep them clean and safe and close them when we're all gone. They remove our snow so we don't fall and they greet our students in the hall as role models. I am so proud of our custodial team in BPS. They've gone above and beyond these past two years and never complained once. And this expression of generosity is just another way they show up every day for our students. Thank you, Local 1952. I want to turn just a moment to acknowledge the operational changes we still continue to face as this pandemic continues to be part of our daily lives. It was emphasized at the beginning of the pandemic that the number of COVID cases was the metric to watch. We had limited testing at the time and still didn't have vaccines. So someone caught COVID, the severity of the case was unpredictable. Collectively, we needed to do everything in our power to stop the spread and limit the number of cases as much as possible. This is why we closed school citywide. It's why we all stayed home as much as we could. It's why we kept our distance, wore a mask and washed our hands if we couldn't go out. It was frightening time when so much was still yet unknown. I remember former chief Marty Martinez said to me at the beginning of all of this that we are now in a phase of learning to live with COVID. It will continue to be part of our daily lives and we must all continue to do our part to protect ourselves and each other by wearing our mask, still testing regularly and of course, getting vaccinated as soon as we possibly can. We must use these metrics to help us not only understand the number of cases, but the severity of those cases like our hospitalization rate. We're in a much different place now than we were at the beginning of this pandemic. We've learned a lot, but we still have a lot that we still need to learn. But it's important for our students to be back in the classroom, learning in person. As we continue to navigate this phase, the pandemic, I know there's still a lot of anxiety and trauma that many of us are working through, particularly our families who have been hard hit and carried such a big weight of this burden. Our priority is always to keep our students and staff safe. It's why we've taken a number of steps that make schools look a bit different than past years. We wear masks, we have air purifiers in every school, we wash our hands frequently. We have new rules about social distancing and we posted numerous vaccine clinics at our schools. One of the important mitigation tools that you've heard me talk about and that we've promised the families and staff would be to have access to weekly pool testing, which has been provided by the state. And I'm grateful to the state and acknowledge how important it is to have this regular testing. But I also need to share and that I too am frustrated, like our families and students and staff with the execution of the testing program. The DESI pool testing has not met the expectations of what was promised. We've had numerous formal calls and many more informal conversations with DESI to discuss our concerns and problem solve together. I also want to acknowledge that contact tracing hasn't been happening fast enough in all of, all of our cases. As a district, we are responsible for contact tracing. We have hired an outside vendor to support our contact tracing because a district this large, we knew that we couldn't be manageable on our own. But there still have been delays and I've expressed firmly to our vendor that this is unacceptable and that it needs to improve. My team has been in constant communication with them and, and doing expectation setting so that we can ensure that we improve and we improve quickly. I know everyone is trying and working very hard to ensure we have proper weekly testing at every single school. We'll continue to work with the state to problem solve and today I shared with our school leaders who have been working tremendously hard with their school nurses and their school staff. And we shared with families as well, the adjustments we're making. I've allocated an additional $3 million increase to, which includes adding 27 additional contact tracers to our district. Contact tracing with the nurse staffing agency to provide, excuse me, contracting with the nurse staffing agency to provide 10 additional nurses so that they can fill vacancies and add needed capacity within our schools. Streamlining the steps to initiate test and stay by ensuring consistency between our digital platforms, which is permission click and crush the curve and granting schools the opportunity to communicate to close contacts directly with our CIC partners. The health and safety of our students is a top priority and the district is committed to COVID prevention and mitigation efforts. We meet daily with the Boston Public Health Commission to review cases, to look at data and to review all of our COVID protocols. I want to thank Dr. Sari Sanchez, who's on the call now and can answer any questions afterward from the Health Commission, who has formally joined us in BPS as part of our COVID management team as we continue to respond, adjust and meet the demands of this pandemic. Managing a health crisis and keeping school open is challenging. It's especially difficult right now, given the current surge we are seeing. And as we expect to return from the holiday break, I wish I could say we're coming out of this, but it would be a bit more challenging. It's going to be a bit more challenging the next several months and we need everyone to get vaccinated. We need everyone to heed public health official advice and avoid, please avoid sending your child to school sick, coming to work sick or going out when you are sick. I can't say it enough, it is so important for our continued ability to keep our schools open that we all heed the advice of our public health officials. I want to shift and talk a bit about school safety. Of course, school safety is just so important to learning. Students and staff have to feel safe when they're in our schools. And as a leadership team, we're doing everything possible so that we can support that goal. Schools develop and finalize safety pens each and every year and they direct how they respond to all issues that might arise in schools. These are reviewed annually and reported to DESI every three years. Deputy Superintendent Sam DePina and his team have established a new internal school safety committee, a cross-functional department group that will review these plans and also take a whole district look at overall safety procedures, including a full rundown of security cameras, metal detectors and other visual deterrents that are strategically deployed in our schools in partnership with our leadership teams. The committee is also reviewing the systems of support we have in place to work with students and staff in response to unfortunate incidents and to also ensure proper protocols are followed to inform communities as warranted. The task of this group is complete a review of safety materials in buildings, including our cameras, our alarms and our external lighting. Survey school leaders on their concerns and make sure that we're responsive to them. Determine short and long-term priorities to address concerns identified, to weekly review data and to ensure that we are getting equitable support out to our schools. Create communication streams to keep all key stakeholders informed. I believe we can only succeed if we approach this work in partnership and that includes all who are involved, our students and their families, teachers and staff, the central office, our union partners, the Boston Police Department and our city at large. We are strongest when we're all united and I would encourage everyone to work together, talk to each other, stay committed to taking steps to ensure everyone's safety in our schools for our students, staff, families and all community members. And like we always say, if you see something that seems a bit off, make sure that you report it to your school leader or to a police official or to one of our members of our team. At the last school committee meeting, there were several questions from members during the OHC update and I committed to bringing additional data forward in this week's superintendent's report. This slide shows the diversity of staff separated by job code and specifically displays data for nurses, school psychologists, school social workers and special education teachers. As you can see, our school social workers have the greatest racial parity to our student body. I want to just give you a second to have a peek at that slide. The second slide shows the diversity of staff. The second slide shows the diversity of staff separated by job code. Sorry, I think I've lost my spot there. This slide shows a breakdown of teacher licensure. We have approximately 345 educators on an emergency license and 162 educators hired on a license or waiver. We're already proactively reaching out to these educators to prepare them for passing the MTEL. While this challenge may be larger than some years due to the emergency licenses, we have always had a disproportionate number of Black and Latinx educators who we hired on waivers. This has been an important part of our strategy to diversify the workforce because we know that there are not enough licensed educators of colors coming out of educator prep programs statewide. And while this does lead to non-renewals of some of these educators, we have a strong track record of rehiring the vast majority of these folks and we have programs in place to support their journey toward licensure. I've also spoken with the commissioner and spoken with him about emergency license licensure during this pandemic time and I hope he will consider in the future extending that to our to our employees who are on this emergency license while we get them fully licensed and prepared. I want to just give an update again on Bill PPS, our master plan before we go to the vote. The district is continuing to reconfigure schools toward more clear predictable pathways for students as passed by the Boston School Committee. Our goal is to increase the number of students making only one transition during their K-12 experience by reconfiguring more pre-K to K-6 elementary schools and hopefully eliminating that UPK gap that we have and 712 secondary schools while preserving some of our K-8s and 912 options for families. That being said, 15 schools will expand from K-5 to K-6, which includes the Blackstone, the Sumner and the Mendel schools as I announced last week. And one high school, English High School will expand from nine to 12 to seven through 12 in September of 22. That adds to the 17 schools that in 2019, 20, 2019, 20, 2019, 2020 school year, where when we expanded our East Boston schools and several others K-5s to K-6s across the district, which were a number about 16 schools and then the Perry School, which went from it being a K-8 to a K-6. So we have about 32 schools that are now in this new configuration of pre-K to grade six, so that is some good progress. And in the upcoming weeks, the Bill PPS team will work alongside school leaders and their school teams to determine programming, staffing and resources that are needed to make these spaces a success. We'll also be finalizing which grades will be using this expanded space and we'll go back to the school communities in February with an update. We're also committed to continuing to assess other options for fall of 2023 to create a solution that fits the needs of each school community. I especially want to thank our school leaders, our community partners, the YMCA and the BCYF, our community members and our families for working in partnership with the district to find solutions for each school community so that students have the ability to experience grade six in their current schools and they won't have to make another transition. I know that this gives a lot of families relief. And many thanks to our finance team, our Bill PPS team, operations and our facility team for working to find solutions for our schools to create the predictable pathways our students need and deserve. It may have come a little late, but we appreciate everybody's patience and creative problem solving as we got to the right solutions for these schools. I want to just mention a little bit about Charlestown Innovation School proposal that came forward, the prospectus that came forward last school committee meeting. For the prospective proposal regulations, I must convene a screening committee, which includes the superintendent or my designee, Chair of the Boston School Committee or their designee and the President of the Boston Teachers Union or their designee within 30 days of receiving the prospectus. The screening committee is scheduled to convene next week to consider the proposal. I will inform the community and school committee on further updates. I also want to let you know that I will be sure that all communities impacted by any changes to Charlestown High School will be consulted and engaged and that we will engage also with educators, with our school leaders, with SPEDPAC and with our EL Task Force as part of any planning for Charles, Charlestown High School. And then just finally, I'd like to first say goodbye to two incredibly dedicated public servants and school committee members, Dr. Harden Coleman and Hernani DeRusio. Mr. DeRusio has made an incredible impact on the school committee in the short time he's been with us. He is a graduate of Boston Public Schools and a parent, which we got to see those little cuties every now and then. Mr. DeRusio understands firsthand the experiences of many of our students and their families. We know he'll be, he'll continue to advocate for children and families through his work at East Boston Neighborhood Health Center and the many organizations he works with. I want to thank you personally, Mr. DeRusio for also pushing us on the exam school issue to get that right. I want to thank you also for your service on the EL Task Force. And I also personally want to thank you for your support and kindness as you've served on the school committee. Dr. Coleman, I've known you the entire time that I've been here. You have been a champion, you have been a nonstop supporter and I have appreciated you so much, just really personally, our personal friendship and relationship as well. I've just known you so long and I've really gotten to know you because you were responsible for my evaluation. So you know, through the good and the bad, the critical feedback and the good feedback, you were always so gracious and so supportive. When you had to give me tough feedback, you did it in a way where I knew it was meant for my growth and for me to be a better leader for this organization. The care and character that you show on this committee is above none. It's just amazing and you are always thinking about how you treat others and how you appreciate the work of the team. I have appreciated your attention to details when it comes to goals and setting targets and being sure that we're looking at the data. You have just been such a champion for our kids in Boston, for their families. And in particular, I want to mention for educators too. As an educator yourself, you have always put them as a top priority in how we care for them. I'll never forget when we first came into the pandemic, your advice to me was to lead with empathy and to be caring and to make sure that you're asking good questions of people and making sure that the organization is doing okay. I want to thank you, I'm gonna say Harden, I know it's Dr. Coleman, but I want to thank you Harden for being just such a great colleague and friend and a really good boss. I'm gonna miss you dearly as you leave the committee. And I, I, I just am speechless with words on how much I'm going to miss you. I also want to thank the counselors for their steadfast dedication to Boston. In other news today, the City Council is transitioning and they have several outgoing city counselors. At large, City Councilor Anissa Sabi George is going out. District four City Councilor Andrea Campbell, District six City Councilor Matt O'Malley and City Councilor President and District seven City Councilor Kim Janey and former Mayor Kim Janey will be leaving their posts. They are incredible leaders. They have voted for our budgets and given us so much support and have held us accountable too. I appreciate our counselors and I appreciate all that they've been able to accomplish. This group has broke new ground, smashed a few ceilings, brought laser focus to some of the most important issues facing our city today and I'm grateful for their collaboration during my tenure as superintendent, especially during the challenges of these past two years. I wish them all the best as they finish out their final weeks on the City Council and I look forward to seeing what they do next. I also want to take a moment to congratulate, congratulate District one City Councilor Lydia Edwards on her victory in yesterday's special primary election for the first Suffolk and Middlesex Senate seat. I wish her luck as she heads into the final election next month. And last, but certainly not least, I would like to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season. As we approach the season of family generosity and renewal, I hope that we do not lose sight of the safety measures that will keep each of us and our loved ones safe. Please continue to get vaccinated, including your booster shot, wear your masks, wash your hands regularly, social distance when necessary, and again, don't go out if you're not feeling well. I also urge you to lean into this time of time of rest and look to recharge on the cusp of a new year. If you have the opportunity to reach back and give a hand up to someone else in need, please do so. Ask a neighbor how they are and give a hug. To those who celebrate, I wish you a Merry Christmas, a Happy Kwanzaa and a Happy Three Kings Day. I'd also like to wish our wonderful students, incredible school-based staff and the outstanding educators in Boston Public Schools an enjoyable winter break. We can't wait to see you back in action on January 4. Thanks for everything and I'll see you the next school committee meeting on January 12, 2022. Happy New Year.
Thank you Superintendent for your report. I will now open it up to questions and discussions from the committee. I like to remind my colleagues about our agreed upon norms that we each have five minutes. I'd like to remind BPS staff to also be briefing your responses and if you have additional questions, I'll come around to you again. Raise your hand virtually or in person to let me know if you would like to speak, make a comment this time. Mr. Coleman, Dr. Coleman?
I did not raise my hand, but I want to, I want to, I want to thank you for your very kind words, Dr. Cassilius and and as you and commend you for the bill, your ability to be resilient in face of great hardship and personal and professional and the challenges to stay positive and elevating an ethic of care above all is a gift that you give us as a committee and the community as well. You know, I think it's, this is a nice pause. I will not miss budget season and I wish you the very best luck with the challenges coming semester.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Mr. DeRusio?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Superintendent. Also, thank you very much for the kind words. Very much appreciate it. And I look forward to our, our, our in-person soon. So thank, thank you for that. Some questions on the remarks, I want to say thank you for announcing the investments in contact tracing and the new staff around that and the focus on that and hopefully that, you know, with us in DESI, we can find a path forward that actually reflects the needs of our district. I've had and you've seen a lot of these communications around the test and state program, contact tracing in general and how it's functioning and just kind of disparity from, from school to school. So I appreciate the focus and an investment in that. And also great to see a friend, Mr. Bakili, who came over from the Janey administration that is working with the school district, I think is, is very good and hopefully can lead to some, some, some good results and soon, given, given the surges and so forth happening. So just thank you on that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Superintendent, I just wanted to come side of you to thank the members of Local 1952 for the, the gifts that they've provided for our kids. I feel that's wonderful. Do you know if there, if those collections are still ongoing? Or has the district received what it, what it needs to support families moving forward this season?
Oh, that's a good question. I will make sure I get something to the school committee. I know that many of our schools are collecting toys and so ask the local school, you can call them or you can call our main number at 617 635 9500, I think.
All righty, thank you.
9,000, I think it's 9,000.
9,000, yeah, thank you. Are there any other comments before we move on? There's no further, if there's no further discussion, I'd now like to entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. So thank you, a second, thank you. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera? Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Before we move on to general public comment, the committee will receive a brief presentation on charter amendment requests for the Edward M. Kennedy Academy of Health Careers, also known as EMK. These charter amendments are time sensitive, so the committee will receive the presentation and take action on these requests later this evening. At this time, I'd like to invite Diane Bassett, EMK Planning and Development Consultant, to please present her report. First, I'd like to invite the superintendent to give opening remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. I don't have any opening remarks. Just happy to see this presentation by the EMK staff who do just a fabulous job for our students.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Bassett.
Thank you. Let me just share my screen. Good evening, Madam Chair, to school committee members, Superintendent Cassilius and all others joining tonight on the call. I am Diane Bassett. I am a consultant with EMK after many years working as a staff member at the school. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Walker Gregory, who couldn't join us. She has a board of trustees meeting at our own school tonight. So I'm sharing with you just a few slides to outline the charter amendment request that we are seeking to submit to the Commissioner of Education. It requires approval of the school committee. So I just want to lay out the contents of that charter amendment request. This is an amendment request that has two items. It asks the Commissioner to approve the Charter School Accountability Plan that governs our school from 2018 to 2023, our current five-year charter term. And it asks the Commissioner to approve the existing Memoranda of Understanding between EMK, the Boston Teachers Union and the BPS School Committee. That also governs our current charter term from 2018 to 2023. Both of these documents are longstanding documents and the process we're asking approval for tonight is the submission of them to the Commissioner. So let me just describe a little bit each of the documents. The first one is our Accountability Plan. Every charter school in the state is required to develop an accountability plan. It is the place where we define the goals and measures aligned with our mission that will be used during our five-year charter term. It is a supplement to the existing accountability process that applies to all public schools in the state. That statewide process addresses things like MCAS achievement and graduation and dropout rates and a number of other things, but the Charter School Accountability Plan is the place where we set out the goals and measures for what we think makes our school unique. It was developed with input from our staff, leaders, students and families and approved by our board. It is aligned with very specific guidance from the Department of Education and requires back and forth conversations with DESI to seek preliminary approval before we submit it to the Commissioner. This plan has been in place since the beginning of our charter term in 2018. It is the source of the measures and the goals and measures that we report on every year in our in our annual report. So we have changed nothing about the Accountability Plan since it was first created. Um, and since it received preliminary approval from the, uh, Charter School Office, what we're asking for tonight is per- permission to submit it formally as a charter amendment so that the Commissioner can approve it. Uh, because our school has a dual mission, we have in our Accountability Plan specific college readiness goals that relate to rigorous coursework, to college admission targets, to rising academic achievement over the five-year charter term. And the second part of our mission related to health professions exploration includes, um, goals and measures related to our science fair and health fair participation and achievement. Um, the engagement of our students in extracurricular programming related to our mission. Um, evidence of the, the mission-aligned college choices of our students, um, goals around, uh, their selection of health professions majors for their college pursuits. And most recently, um, the addition of goals related to the health assisting students in our Chapter 74 program and their attainment of the CNA credential. Um, the third area of focus of the Accountability Plan is the commitment to sharing best practices within and beyond BPS. It is required of all charter schools in Massachusetts, and it is a, um, commitment that we take seriously in our work within the district. So that's the Accountability Plan. The second piece of our charter amendment request relates to the Memoranda of Understanding. Um, every charter school that is a Horace Mann Charter School must establish a memorandum of agreement with the Teachers Union and the school district where they operate. Um, that written agreement specifies the fiscal and programmatic relationship between the organizations. It governs a five-year charter term. I, I would say it has operated, it has governed our relationship successfully since the inception of our school. This is our fifth charter term. Um, and I, I feel like the MOU that was developed over time um, between EMK and the Boston Public Schools and the Boston Teachers Union is really an exemplar for, uh, Horace Mann Charter Schools in the state. We use an existing, um, template that has had extensive review and input from BPS Legal Counsel. Um, it, the two elements of the Memoranda of Understanding, there's a Type A Memoranda required by DESI. It is between EMK and the Boston Public School, Boston Public Schools, excuse me. That document, after it was developed, was reviewed and approved by the school committee in September 2018 and was executed by all parties in October of that year. Um, the Type B MOU, which includes EMK and the Boston Teachers Union with, um, the inclusion of the Boston Public Schools, was executed by all parties in October 2018. Um, again, like the Accountability Plan, we haven't made any changes to these documents since they were reviewed and approved by the school committee. What we're asking for is permission to submit them formally as a charter amendment so that the Commissioner of Education can approve them. Um, so, wh- well, I understand that tonight, um, this presentation allows us to share both the documents themselves and then move toward a vote this evening because of the time-sensitive nature of the approval process. We ask for the school committee to vote, uh, this evening in support of submission of the charter amendment request. I'm happy to take questions if that would be helpful.
Are there any questions from the committee?
Um, Madam Chair, I'd just like to briefly ask, uh, could you please explain why it wasn't submitted? I may have missed that.
I would say it is, it was a twofold issue. Um, we developed these documents during our first year of our current charter term in the summer of 2018. Um, we should have submitted them that fall, um, and we didn't do it, and then.
We be in the school?
We being the.
Or the school board?
The school.
The Board of Trustees.
Yes, it's the board's responsibility to submit them to the school committee for approval so that then they can go to the Commissioner. Um, in the spring of, uh, 2019, that's when things went awry for all of us with COVID, and this was the last thing we were thinking about. Um, the documents were signed and approved and shared with DESI but not submitted formally, and so this kind of corrects that administrative oversight um, so that it will be taken care of before we seek, uh, renewal of our charter term in the next year.
And, and I'm sorry, you are speaking for the board, correct?
Yes, the board, uh, voted on these documents originally in 2018 and again in 2021 so that we could present them to the school committee.
And the board chair now is?
Elmer Freeman.
But he's not with us this evening.
No, he's not. He's, we have a school board meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Here we now, I just wanted to say thank you, and the committee will look forward to taking action on these charter amendments later in this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Sullivan, I believe we can move on to to, um, public comment.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but I refer to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have twenty-seven speakers for general public comment. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please direct your comment to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure that you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comments. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Only speakers who turn on their camera will be allowed to testify. Otherwise, speakers can submit their testimony in writing. We'll begin this evening with Deirdre Manning, M. Manning, S. Manning, Deisha Golizada, and Jidelis Rodriguez. If you could, please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Deirdre Manning? Good evening.
Evening. Um, thank you all for the opportunity to address you today. I, um, am the parent of second and fourth graders at the, um, Henderson Upper School in Dorchester. I also live in Dorchester. Um, I, I hope you'll give me a little bit of grace and extend my time, just a teeny bit, because what I have to say is really so important. Um, I want to start out by saying that I've had many productive communications, both over the phone and via email with Mr. Roundtree, who is the interim principal at the Henderson, doing an admiral job, um, standing in for Mrs. Lampoon, who, as we all know, um, is not able to join us for some time. I also had the pleasure of a twenty-minute-long conversation with Dr. Cassilius earlier today, and I would like to thank her for letting me talk for very much more than ten minutes of our twenty-minute conversation, and she, um, listened and had a lot of, um, interesting and, and helpful things to say. Um, I do want to say one disappointing thing is that I've placed three phone calls to the Boston, um, Health Department of BPS, and they have not called me back, which I find, um, discouraging at the least. I had a very productive co- phone call with Dr. Sanchez, I believe, um, formerly of the Boston Public Health Commission, but now on loan to Boston Public Schools. Um, but what I have to say is, is really just so disheartening and discouraging in terms of all that people have done, um, together collectively to try to limit the spread of COVID, um, in our community and in our public schools. But what I wanted people here to know is that my daughters have participated regularly in pool testing, and it's something that I believe in strongly to help protect our community. It's disappointing that other families aren't participating, but we have been doing everything that we can, including me getting vaccinated, and my daughter's initially being vaccinated but being forced to put the second vaccine on pause because they contracted COVID. So just to back up a little bit to give you as briefly as I can, um, how this all unfolded. My daughter, as I mentioned before, both of them participate in pool testing, which unfortunately is on a Thursday at the Henderson. Um, the results came back on Friday, and there was at least one person in a pool of seven children who was positive. So the testing team came in, CIC, which I understand is not something that the district has a choice over using. Uh, but the people came in, they tested my daughter, um, without informing me. Um, when the children asked why they were being tested again, because this had never happened before, they were informed that something had come back positive, but it could be a false positive. So they did, um, a rapid test of all seven children, which came back negative, and then they did a PCR test, which they sent off, uh, to a laboratory with apparently no sense of urgency, given that there was at least one positive person in this pool. Um, from that point on, um, I was told nothing. None of the other, um, six parents who had children tested a second time were informed. Um, as a result of this, I went through a weekend doing things that we typically do as a family over weekends, taking typical precautions but not being ultra-conservative, because I had, have, having heard nothing, assumed that, um, both my girls were, um, not positive or did not test positive for COVID on that Thursday.
Excuse me, Ms. Manning, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you please wrap up?
Yeah, I'll, um, wrap up, um, fairly quickly, and then my daughter will, um, carry on for me. Um, what I find most distressing is that we came in contact with well over three hundred people that weekend, and at least two of those occasions were not masked because it involved swimming, um, a- and eating and drinking. Um, and so what I feel most troubling is that parents who are participating in pool testing are not, um, aware of the terrible delays, as Dr. Cassilius mentioned earlier, with, um, health IT and with the CIC with testing. Um, had somebody told me on Friday that my daughter might be positive, and as it turned out, two of those seven students were positive and circulated in the community for three days, I would have gotten her tested. I would not have brought her to Worcester. I would not have brought her to Braintree, to South Boston, to, um, a Christmas tree lighting, a ceremony that included part indoors with children eating and drinking. Um, it's also really troubling that at the Henderson, which has a medically fragile community, there are only two full-time nurses, and that has not changed. And I understand from speaking to Dr. Cassilius that they've made some progress in trying to get additional resources, but I was not given the opportunity to protect my younger daughter from her COVID-positive sister. I also, as a single parent who has asthma, although fully vaccinated, didn't take any precautions myself. I cannot get sick because I don't have anybody who can look after my seven- and nine-year-old girls. So I want to say that what I would most like to do, and I'll just summarize really quickly the takeaways, is that parents have a false sense of security. Boston Public Schools, I understand from speaking to a senior advisor, Ms. Costello, is planning on sending out some sort of communication, but I talked to her about that last week, and it still hasn't been sent. If IT health is calling a parent a week after, um, a COVID-positive event, the tracing is just not at all helpful. Um, I understand that some charter schools are using an automated system.
Excuse me, Ms. Manning, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have several other speakers, and I'm afraid you're past your time.
I know, but I have, uh, two other, um, members of my family who have also set aside time, so I.
Would they like to speak?
I'm sorry?
Would they like to speak?
Yes, they would. I just have to set the table for them a little bit because of seven and nine-year-olds, they can't give you the pertinent information in advance. Um, the other thing that I feel is critically important is that, um, parents need to know testing is delayed. There should have been an urgent test request for individual PCR tests where they knew that somebody was positive, especially going into the weekend. That's critically important. I could have gotten COVID. Right now, I've been testing negative, but my younger daughter got COVID with symptoms, which I feel would not have happened if she hadn't had four full days of exposure to a co- a COVID-positive family member. Um, the, the Henderson population of seven hundred and fifty-five students has an incredible number of medically fragile. And they need.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you like, your children are signed up. Would you like to turn it over to them? Because we have to move on to our other speakers who are.
I, I appreciate your trying to keep order, Ms. Sullivan, but this is really so important. It really is. I know that other people have important things to say as well. I've never participated in any of these forums before, but I'm so upset that my health was put at risk, and I was literally in tears about what happened to our family. This can't happen to other families, and while I appreciate that I've had the attention of Dr. Cassilius and Mr. Roundtree, I need the school committee members to be fully informed about this failure of the system. People are not going to participate in pool testing if it's not done well, because it negates the entire purpose of getting information out to the community quickly. So I will leave it with that, and I will ask my nine-year-old, um, who, um, can follow up with some of the details about really how many people we came in contact with.
Ms. Manning, you're muted.
I apologize. Um, she tells me that she's unable, um, to, to speak. She's, it's been an upsetting thing for our family, and unfortunately, with me getting upset and talking about it, she's not in the, the frame of mind where she can contribute something positive to the conversation. But I want the takeaway to be, and quiero decir también a la señora Polanco Garcia que yo hablo español. Si quiere comunicarse conmigo, me gustaría hablar con usted si necesita más información. Gracias. Thank you for listening. I, I hope you'll take this, the urgency of this situation and really get some boots on the ground immediately. More nurses, I, Ms. Dr. Cassilius mentioned the twenty-seven additional contact tracers, but you can't be contacting people a week after somebody's tested positive and ask them what bus number your seven-year-old was on. It's, it's just ridiculously absurd that this is the place where we are, and I, I appreciate that I've taken more time, but I, I hope that I've communicated ade- adequately the urgency of this situation and how important it is to address these critical health needs sooner rather than later. Um, positive, COVID-positive cases are rising.
Thank you.
More nurses, we need them right away.
Thank you for your comments. Our, um, our next speakers, Deisha and Jidelis, are not signed into the meeting, so we'll move on to our next set of speakers. Andrew Iliff, Eugenia Corbo, Michael Heischman, Tom McKeever, and Neil O'Brien. If you could all please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Andrew Iliff?
Hi, thank you for this, Chairman Robinson, thank you for this opportunity to address the committee. My name is Andrew Iliff. I'm a parent at Boston Latin Academy and Mission Hill School, where I'm a family representative on the governing board. This evening, I would like to speak as a Mission Hill School governing board member about the emergency school review ordered by the district of our school. In November, the governing board was given almost no notice to participate in the review, which we were told would determine the future of our school. We were also told that the review was expected to be completed by the first of December, which would at least give our school enough time to plan for the coming academic year, particularly recruiting and retaining staff and engaging with families. We are now told that the review will not be completed until mid-January at the. We are now told that the review will not be completed until mid-January at the earliest. Once again, the district is undermining the future of our school by failing to anticipate the consequences of its actions. You've heard from myself and others at the school about other actions. Families and staff, both those already part of our school and those who might join us, have been left in limbo without adequate information to make key decisions. I personally have been contacted by a family weighing whether to remain at Mission Hill or take an open spot off the waitlist at another school, and I'm certain I'm not alone. The pilot school model depends on effective collaboration between the school community and the district, but at every step this year, the district has let us down, choosing to hamstring our school rather than help us recover, and leaving the school with only interim leadership insufficient to meet the school's needs. The Mission School community, for its part, is doing everything we can to fill the gaps created by the district's decisions. Families, the family council, and the governing board have stepped into the breach to support communications, reach out to students, hold elections, and address the need for after-school care. We ask that the school committee support us in our efforts to rebuild our school, including in the exercise of the governing board's responsibility to oversee the selection of new school leadership. The board has sought to collaborate with the district, but the timeline for the school review would now mean that the best candidates to lead our school would have already been hired before our position is posted, leaving our school in an even worse position. We care too much about our school to let that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eugenia Corbo.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I'm Eugenia Corbo. I'm a parent at the Mario Umana Academy in East Boston. The LUC Act was passed four years ago, allowing for flexibility to give students access native language instruction. At the Mayor of Form and Education, then-candidate Michelle Wu expressed her commitment to supporting and expanding dual language. Yet, as our school goes into budget season, we see the district taking a step back instead of a step forward when it comes to dual language in East Boston. For the second year in a row, our school has been denied the opportunity to open a second K-1 classroom. It's no wonder we're losing one of the three K-2 classrooms from this school year. We cannot see all three K-2s coming from a single K-1. Families who do not speak a second language at home are more likely to go into dual-language programs if they can start early. If those families start at K-0, K-1 at another school, they're very unlikely to shift to the Umana for K-2. We're doing a disservice to a dual-language program if we don't set the conditions for true-to- immersion, including a significant number of families who don't speak a second language at home. But more importantly, we're doing a disservice to our multilingual learners. Kids are being shut into SEI classrooms at four years old, and then those families will not be making the switch in K-2 either. And we know by now that many multilingual learners have not been successful using English immersion. Also, approximately 80% of students in our special ed and ADA programs expand at home. As we look to educate these kids in the least restrictive environment possible, I urge you to look into creating dual-language inclusion at the Umana as a strand. And finally, access to dual-language seats is extremely inequitable in our district. There are families who live very close to East Boston, in Charlestown, the North End, the Seaport, and downtown, who are interested in dual-language, but they only get offered the Hernandez, which is just way too far for them. Please make access to dual-language equitable for all children in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Heischman.
Mike Heischman, Dorchester, Beja. It takes a village to raise a child. For decades, I've joined forces with the Boston Teachers Union, working together to improve public education in Boston. I have been impressed with their recent efforts to involve the community in creating a package of improvements for their negotiations with the school department. Unions work to improve their members' financial situations and their other working conditions. The BTU is doing much more than this. They understand that educating the whole child means improving the learning conditions in the schools and social conditions in the community, like affordable housing. On December 7th, I attended a well-attended BU Zoom meeting with community members. There was a report back on the progress, really a lack of progress in negotiations with the school department. The two major topics discussed were healthy, safe, and modern facilities and housing. BTU's bold proposals that demonstrate that they understand that it takes a village to raise a child. The response from the school department has been disheartening. I requested the school department return to the negotiations table with a commitment to join forces with the union, work together to improve our facilities, work together to improve learning conditions in our schools, work together to improve social conditions in the community that will benefit our children and families. What is happening with BSAC? We used to get regular reports. A strong student voice has been absent for our meetings this school year. What has been done to repair the damage done last year by the school departments who are student leaders? What is the department's plan to remove its obstacles so student voices can once again be heard? COVID cases continue to skyrocket. Thank you, Dr. Cassilius, for your excellent presentation today. The new Omicron variant is far more infectious. Will our schools be super straightest? If necessary, we may need to close our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom McKeever. You're muted, Mr. McKeever.
Forgive me. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you distinguished committee members. My name is Tom McKeever, and I am the president of SEIU Local 888. We represent 2,000 members in the city of Boston. I will be mindful of my time, and I have, my questions are as follows. The superintendent is quoted in a November 3rd Globe article regarding the Principal Lampron beating. This violent behavior will not be tolerated, and students and worker safety is our top priority here at Local 888. The majority of the security cameras have not worked at the Henderson School in two years. Further, the Henderson cameras were recently removed, and electrical boxes were covered with electrical plates. Why? In recent newspaper article, the Herald reporter, Alexi Cohen, wrote about the district refusing to answer the Herald record request for five months. The district has also failed to answer Local 888's records of request. The Herald was forced to file an appeal at the Secretary of State's office, won a ruling stating that the district should produce answers to the records request. Why does the district illegally refuse to answer the Herald and Local 888? The 17F records request by, from BPS, by City Council Frank Baker, were answered with an Excel spreadsheet of statistics showing the total amount of infractions and not the requested individual police reports that were requested. Why? Why is the district refusing to honor the arbitration decision won by Local 888 and the case of our member, Robert Ridlong, who was employed by BPS Planning and Engineering? Is the district simply noncompliant to legal record requests, or is the district anti-union? We have also submitted these questions in written testimony, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Neil O'Brien, followed by Mary Rice, Betsy Yoshimura, Sherry Kelleher, and Lauren Peter. If you could all please raise your hands virtually. Neil O'Brien?
Ms. Sullivan, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay. My name is Neil O'Brien. I'm a representative of Local 888. We represent about 350 Guild members, which are administration schools. I have a few questions I'd like to submit by, right here, right now, and I've also submitted them to Ms. Sullivan for the school committee review. They're related to safety. Video cameras and metal detectors and other safety equipment have been non-functioning for up to several years. We're wondering and would like an answer on why. At the Condon School, Condon victims of sexual harassment and Condon victims of vehicular assaults and Henderson employees threatened with physical violence have never been contacted by BPS, PS Support, or EAP. We want to know why. Local 888 continually requests the district fund to fund and establish a written safety protocol, including the necessary safety tools and equipment with input from parents and workers. This will restore pre-existing school safety. Local 888 has received absolutely no response when we ask these questions to the district, and we would like to know why. Next question, and I'll be done in a moment, is when will the district address the understaffing of local 888 administrative workers? We have, for example, at the Condon School, our positions were completely vacated by that school leadership. Next question. A worker assisted Principal Lampron, assisted Principal Lampron immediately after she was attacked by placing his coat on her while waiting for police and medics. This worker was removed from his second-grade Henderson class and sent to another school. We would like to know why, as a representative of workers. Why is a punitive action, a punitive action, being taken against one human being for assisting a fellow human being that was viciously beat? We hope to get answers from the school committee or from the superintendent directly, because we have had none yet. We have information requests and record requests that have not been answered, and we came to the school committee tonight to ask these questions directly and enter them into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Rice.
Hello, my name is Mary Rice. I'm a BPS parent of three, and I live in Charlestown. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak. Last night, as a parent, I attended one of the information sessions on this year's exam school admissions process, and I feel obligated to speak up because of what I learned about how the point system will affect BPS students. I am a population health researcher and a strong proponent of efforts to address the systemic racism and economic adversity that have made Boston's top exam schools inaccessible to most BPS students. I welcome the tiered admission system by neighborhood that this committee developed. However, I'm very concerned that the plan to add 10 points to all but five schools achieves the opposite of what the school committee had intended by introducing a systematic bias against certain BPS students. I ran some numbers, and I would like to give an example of what this 10-point penalty means for students. A straight-A student living in public housing who attends one of those five schools will receive 100 points. Her friend, living in the same housing complex, who receives a B+, two A minuses, and an A from another BPS school, will receive 10.9 points, 90.9 for his GPA, plus 10 additional points. The straight-A student, who faces economic and social hardship just like her neighbor and has excelled in her studies, will be systematically excluded by the very school system that invested in her education until this point. And when she considers her educational opportunities, she will not be able to compete with A students within her socioeconomic tier because she attends one of five BPS schools that did not make the arbitrary 40% cutoff. These five schools are part of the BPS system. It's hard to argue that giving 10 points to all students except those attending five schools improves equity or opportunity. These points were intended to offset an exam that was not given last year, so the effect is only to penalize and not equalize. This committee has a better understanding now compared to last summer of how this 10-point penalty will introduce bias against students at these five schools. I ask you to motion to reverse this penalty for the sake of equity and opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Betsy Yoshimura. I don't see Betsy with us at the moment, so let's try Sherry Kelleher.
Good afternoon. Am I showing up?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Kelleher. I am a Charlestown resident, BPS parent of a child attending Boston Latin and the Warren Prescott. I wanted to thank the superintendent for her remarks regarding COVID testing and the fact that our partners are falling down. We've recently been informed, much after the fact, right before Thanksgiving, that our son was exposed to COVID, to a COVID-positive student at lunch. We know of other cases where people are not being informed, because they're told their child is vaccinated, therefore, they're not considered candidates. That's completely unacceptable, given the level of breakthrough going into the holiday season and everybody wanting to finally spend some time with their families, which they won't do if they know they need to either A, get tested, or they're positive. I really hope that BPS will try and do as much as it can to speed up these gaps. I'd also like to get further information, greater transparency on what BPS is doing in terms of hiring, given that not that long ago, you mentioned that you had 300 openings, and my understanding is that you're going forward with mass core standards for next fall. And yet, none of, the vast majority of our high schools are not at a level where they're sufficient, and you'll need to hire more staff, and how that's going to be done in such short order. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I see that Betsy Yoshimura is with us and has raised her hand. Betsy?
Yeah. Hey, start my video. Allow I'll go. Okay, sorry about all that. I kind of, I got booted out of Zoom. But thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to the community. I am Betsy Yoshimura, and my daughter is a second grade, no, yeah, second grader at the Mario Umana Academy in East Boston, where we live. And I am here to testify about the dual-language schools and the, specifically, the refusal to provide another K-1 classroom to the Umana, which is going to severely impact our enrollment in years going forward. And I echo everything that Eugenia told the committee earlier. And I just wanted to read a quote from, from Michelle Wu regarding this, which says, "We need to be expanding and putting in more resources to bilingual and multilingual education programs. This is such an asset for our students, and we cannot approach it from a deficit-based lens here." And then talking about the process of navigating IEPs and assessments, "We need to meet parents and legal guardians where they are at when it comes to students with disabilities, and the IEP process needs to have barriers taken down, particularly on the language side and when and where there are overlaps with multilingual families and the disability community." I think overall, this is a commitment to lift up and value our students' identities across the district. Part of being an anti-racist district is ensuring that we are staffing, resourcing, and identifying the strengths of our district, which include having so many students from immigrant Which include having so many students from immigrant backgrounds and multilingual families. So let's ensure that we are creating more programs that are dual language programs. And this will be a huge draw as well for many families who see this as a benefit. And I really am hoping that we can. That we can make the dual language program at the Umana. Even more successful than it has been and I appreciate your time. Also, I also like what Deirdre and Sherry both said because COVID is no joke. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Peter, followed by Marie Mercurio, Sharon Hinton. Sonya Harris and Vivian Ho. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Lauren Peter.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. I'm a parent of a Sumner student and I wanted to talk briefly to say thank you. For committing to a sixth grade at the Sumner, the Blackstone and the Mendel. This has eased a lot of consternation in these communities. I want to speak on the behalf of the Irving, the Timbulte and the Jackson Mans communities. To encourage the committee to continue to use your equity. Analysis in how these closures move forward and in how. The students and the parents and the teachers are communicated with and how. Things move forward with these communities. They, they are not just buildings, they are communities. And so, thank you very much, but I encourage you to continue to use your equity lens as you move forward with built BPS. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Our next speaker is Marie Mercurio.
Can you see me?
No, we can't see you.
Okay. Now we can't. Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marie Mercurio and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the ongoing exam school admissions discussions. I have three topics to bring up today. The first one is that it has now been five months after your policy has been adopted. And we are just getting final confirmation, confirmation of which 11 schools, I heard five earlier. But I saw 11 schools that will not receive bonus points on their scores as recently posted at the BPS website. And they are BLS, Elliott, Linden, Kilmer, Manning, Mozart, Allegieri, BLA, Baldwin, BTU and Beethoven. Why are the Baldwin and Beethoven schools listed since they go to at most second grade? BLS and BLA are also listed, but that is only relevant to students applying for ninth grade seats. So now we're down to seven schools that will not receive bonus points for seventh grade admissions. People have been debating the non-bonus point schools since July. Why has it taken so long to come up with a list that isn't even accurate? And to be clear, my son goes to a school that will gain these bonus points. We don't need them. Second item, you should know that at last night's BLS school site council meeting. They discussed an after-school program for class six, which is grade seven, that is quote targeted to class six students identified. As most in need of academic support based on term one report cards, end of quote. Let's talk about the elephant in the room. I would like to point out that this after-school program has not been in existence in any other year. The zip code quota class came with 20% merit set aside, but it has been eliminated going forward. We are very much in uncharted territory regarding the success of these students. And regarding the reputable public high school ranking that BLS upholds across the country. This will affect exam school enrollment as people like myself believe in merit-based classical and academically rigorous education. We may look elsewhere. My final item is a request regarding BPS low enrollment numbers and exam schools specifically. BPS should strive to get invites out sooner than later. Parents cannot wait for BPS invites when acceptances to alternate options are due by March. Parents need to weigh all of their options and have a similarly aligned timetable in order to make the best decision for their kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon Hinton is not signed into the meeting. So our next speaker will be Sonya Harris.
Good evening, everyone. Can you see me? Well, it says Ms. Harris. I have to change it to Sonya Harris. Oh, okay, one minute.
Oh, that's fine. If you could please turn on your camera.
Okay. My video, it says my video is on, is asking me to stop it. You can't see me. Oh. How's that? Oh, sorry.
There you are. Thank you.
I need it late. Okay, all right, I'm gonna go later. All right, thank you. I want to say first, I want to say good evening, everyone. Thank you for this speaking opportunity. I want to revisit the summer 2020. Back-to-school safety planning where Dr. Casellius, I participated in one of those meetings and. I'm, I would be remiss if I didn't say I'm highly concerned this evening to hear. That we're still having issues with COVID management and or mismanagement oversight. I am a BPS parent and I'm also a BPS exam school graduate and I live in Mattapan. And I'm also immunocompromised and my daughter attends a school where she also swims and she also eats lunch. Sometimes without a mask, so I'm highly concerned listening to what other parents are concerned about. So I wanted to address that and put it aside for a moment and revisit it another time. But during the previous meeting, Human Capital stated it would give principals hiring latitude contingent upon evaluation reporting. I would like to know what measures are in place to ensure principals in our schools. Will honor and preserve staffing diversity and representation. So again, Dr. Casellius, thank you for sharing your staffing levels. Presentation tonight. I appreciate that. And my next issue goes on to the exam schools and this is a follow-on. After listening to a parent speak last week, in regards to the exam school admission process. I don't think it's fair when students leave the district after first, second or third grade. To get the advantage of a private education or independent education. And then test for a BPS middle or high school seat. I would like to strongly advocate for BPS students who matriculate to graduation. And or meet the criteria for admission on merit mainly and also give them first consideration. Because they are true BPS students who stick it out. And they prove they have the motivation, aptitude and commitment to continue their success. At a more rigorous learning environment such as the exam schools. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vivian Ho is not signed into the meeting. So our next speaker will be Josette Tenias, followed by Cecil Carey. Michael Turkla. Sarah Grimmett. And Ben Blanco. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Josette?
Hi, everyone. Just give me one second. I apologize. I'll be ready in just a few seconds. Yes, good evening, everyone. Tonight. You'll hear testimony from the CHS community about the recently submitted prospectus. To close Charlestown High School and reopen it as Charlestown Innovation and Inclusion School in fall of 2022. My name is Josette Tenias. I'm a guidance counselor at Charlestown High School. I'm coming to you as a member of the Charlestown High School community. We are coming to you with our critique of the innovation prospectus. And our ideas for improving our school. Our biggest concern with this prospectus is that zero Charlestown High School students, families or staff were consulted. The proposal writers lack a deep understanding of our current student population. Specifically of our students in the life skills program. This information is important for the selection of appropriate career pathway programs. Inaccurate and out-of-date information reflects the lack of engagement and knowledge of the school community. The writers who do not attend CHS nor included voices of the existing school community in their process. Judge Charlestown to be a failing school based on school test scores and enrollment patterns. These are narrow measures of our student population. They do not reflect our growth and progress or what's meaningful about our school. This is deeply wrong. It takes a deficit viewpoint of CHS to justify closing the school for someone else's interests. And this is rooted in racism, classism, ableism and linguistic discrimination. We do need greater investment in opening our schools. And we should have this for the students who already attend them. This shouldn't be dependent on placating families who have opted out of truly public education unless they had control over it. We call on the Boston School Committee to reject the recent proposal to close the Charlestown High School. This proposal would cause unnecessary harm to an existing school community and eliminate needed specialized program for our student populations. Our city does need, does not need specialized admissions. Enrollment barriers and autonomies that would only serve to create another exclusionary school with a curated population. We ask you to support Charlestown High School, a truly public open enrollment school that celebrates diversity. And is committed to meeting the complex needs of all our students who come to Charlestown High School. With a diversity of backgrounds, skills and needs. And thank you so much for hearing us tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Tenias. Our next speaker is Cecil Carey.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Cecil Carey. I'm coming to you as a member of the Charlestown High School community. We're coming to you with our critique of this innovation prospectus and our ideas for improving our school. Our biggest concern with this prospectus is again, zero Charlestown High School students, families or staff were consulted. The prospectus was submitted a few weeks ago and would effectively close Charlestown High, reopen it as a new school. With unclear futures for current students and staff. The entire committee might not even be aware of this development. But it needs to be voted on by Chair Jerry Robinson, Superintendent Casellius and our union leadership by the end of the month. This is urgent. One of our school's instructional goals is to become an anti-racist learning community. And our district has invested resources, brought in scholars like Ibram X. Kendi and Bettina Love to become anti-racist. Put simply, this proposal is antithetical to those goals. We feel this prospectus is an example of structural racism. A proposal like this must be considered in the context of the history of white flight from Charlestown High School. As committee members know, in the 1970s, Charlestown High was desegregated under court-ordered busing, which resulted in white flight. Now, white families are proposing to take over a school that was abandoned. It is hard for our community to ignore that this is a group of mostly white parents. The proposal fails to include adequate programming for students with disabilities, English language learners. And there were no Charlestown families of color included in crafting this proposal. This feels like a hostile takeover. The unstated goal is to empty out a school full of experienced teachers and families of color so that they can use its resources. Listen to this. The proposal identifies the Warren Prescott, the Elliott Keta Eight School and Harvard Kent Schools. As the only schools with guaranteed pathways to their new version of Charlestown High. Those are great schools, but they are 59% white, 30% white and 62% white respectively. BPS is 15% white. Charlestown High School is currently 5% white. Charlestown is rapidly gentrifying and this is an attempt to gentrify Charlestown High School. We're calling on the district to utilize its racial equity planning tool when considering this proposal. And ultimately reject this proposal and moving forward, ensure that all stakeholders are given authentic input. When helping improve and chart a future course for our school. Thank you. You'll hear from more of us. I'm sorry, one last thing. We had a lot of students that were hoping to testify tonight and they are really put off by the camera requirement. I really hope that the school committee can rethink this camera requirement for young people. It's given a lot of them cold feet, which is really just a shame for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Turkla.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, good evening. My name is Michael Turkla. I'm an inclusion specialist at Charlestown High School. I'm coming to as a member of our Charlestown High School community. With our critique of the innovation prospectus and our ideas for improving our school. Our biggest concern with this prospectus is that zero Charlestown High students, families or staff were consulted. Because of this prospectus was written by individuals who did not have a full understanding of our school. CHS is grossly mischaracterized as a failing school that lacks inclusive learning environments. The prospectus states that almost 50% of students at the school have a disability. And are taught with limited or no access to a learning experience in an inclusive setting. And as an inclusion specialist, I can tell you that's completely wrong. This is just not true. CHS has been operating on a full inclusion model for the past five years. And it hasn't been funded as an inclusion model. We as a staff voted to change our schedules, work outside of our contract in order to support this. Because we believe it's the best for the students and it's not being recognized because no one at the school was consulted. In reality, 100% of our diploma-bound students with IEPs at CHS take core academic classes in an inclusion setting. Additionally, 17% of CHS students are in our life skills program, which is not diploma-bound. The proposal writers lack a nuanced understanding of this group of students. And what the least restrictive environment for those students would actually look like. A name change to Charlestown Innovation and Inclusion School is not the same as an actual change in inclusion practices at the school. You're going to hear later from my colleagues about what we actually need in terms of inclusion support and how the prospectus fails to address these. The prospectus makes no mention to roads. No mention to our Road to Success Program and Alternative Education Program housed within our school that addresses the needs of overaged and undercredited students. Entire cohorts of our students are being ignored and cast aside by the writers of this proposal. Where, where are the supposed, where are they supposed to go to school next year? Finally, and bizarrely, the prospectus also states that CHS does not have an advisory during school day. We do. We have advisory every week. And this could, this could easily fact-check if the writers had even bothered to speak to any member of our community. Literally any member of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Grimmett.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, my name is Sarah Grimmett and I am coming to you as a health professions teacher and a member of the Charlestown High School community. As you've heard my colleagues say, we are coming to you with our critique of this innovation prospectus. And our biggest concern is that zero Charlestown High School students, families or staff were consulted. This prospectus misuses data to characterize our school as failing rather than seeing the successes and inclusivity of our school. The prospectus cites our graduation rate as a main concern why we need to close immediately. But their data does not capture our reality. As an open enrollment school, context is everything. And first and foremost, not all of our students graduate in four years. Many of them graduate in five years. As part of our competency-based education philosophy, we believe at CHS that students can take as long as they need. To reach proficiency in a given subject. If graduation takes one extra year, that does not mean that the student or the school is a failure. Additionally, as my colleague Mike said, 17% of our student population is in our life skills program. Which is certificate-bound, not diploma-bound. These students are counted as not graduating even if they complete the certificate program at CHS. We are committed as a school to improving our graduation rate and have multiple initiatives to do so. The writers of this prospectus ignore this context and these initiatives. It additionally cites MCAS scores as a reason we should close immediately. But once again, they ignore the context that influences MCAS achievement. Again, our non-diploma-bound students are counted as failing MCAS when they aren't even taking it. We have a huge proportion of English learners at CHS who should be focusing on learning a second language instead of taking yet another test. We practice competency-based education at CHS that does not align with narrow standardized testing. But despite all this context, why should such a narrow measure of standardized achievement be the reason that an entire school committee is dissolved? Put simply, the prospectus cherry picks data to intentionally make our school look as bad as possible. It's dishonest, and we will not stand for it. If the writers of this prospectus had taken the time to actually talk to members of the CHS community, we could have identified these errors. The fact that they did not find it worth their time speaks volumes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ben Blanco, followed by Cole Moran, Kristin McCain, Alaa Razek, and Amy Pia Citali. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Ben Blanco.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Ben Blanco. I'm also coming to you as a member of the Charleston High School community. I teach in the SLIF program at Charleston, and I'm here to speak against the prospectus to change Charleston to an innovation school. Specifically, I want to address the fact that the prospectus doesn't mention anything about the existing SLIF program, and the existing prospectus proposes ideas to support language learners that I don't think would be adequate to support the students that we have in our school right now. So the prospectus talks about providing native language support through paraprofessionals. But as I stated before, there's no mention of the existing SLIF program or the specific needs that would be required to support SLIF students. To give a little context, SLIF students are those that are identified by the district to give more support than the average language learner, especially in their native language literacy and math skills. These are students that often experience interrupted schooling in their home countries, don't have the same number of years of schooling as their peers. So these are students who are actually receiving native language support, but on top of native language instruction are given really targeted interventions by my co-teacher and I in this SLIF program. We've gone through multiple trainings, professional development, and we've built materials and curriculum based on our experiences working with our SLIF students. Native language paraprofessionals are not enough to address the needs that our SLIF students have. Additionally, the proposal is unclear about how it would support multiple languages in a classroom. This year, I'm actually working in a classroom where we teach in English, Spanish, Mandarin. And the level of preparation that I feel like I'm doing for this class in terms of materials, planning out lessons and discussions is more than would be supported by a native language paraprofessional. Finally, many of the students in our multilingual program and in our SLIF program are working. So the prospectus's extended school day does not support the schooling needs of these students. So for these reasons, I urge the school committee to reject the proposal. As was mentioned prior, no members of the staff or students were consulted for the proposal. And as a result, there's no mention of the existing SLIF program or the needs of these students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cole Moran.
Good evening, Chairwoman Robinson, Superintendent Casilius, and members of the school committee. My name is Cole Moran, and I am the 10th grade English teacher at Charleston High School. I speak today to ask that you reject the current innovation proposal for our school. Each year, I share with my students that I am the first in my family to graduate from college, having received a full scholarship to attend Yale University. One common gut punch response I hear when I share this is, mister, we don't deserve to have you as a teacher. The fact that any child in our city feels this way is a great shame upon each of us. Our students conclude how we feel about them not based on our words, but based on the state of our institutions. If students know wider schools get better resources in this city, what else can they conclude? As a faculty at Charleston, we know intimately that our open enrollment high schools are in crisis, not because of our young people, not because of our faculty, but because of chronic underinvestment and instability that sends the message that our students don't deserve more. We have demanded stability of leadership, a fully funded inclusion model, and an equitable budget to compete with BPS schools with private funding. None of our demands have been answered. Instead, we are facing a proposal that would implode our community. This proposal promises the resources our students deserve, but on a conditional basis. The condition being a neighborhood school that answers to a private board and an increasingly gentrified neighborhood. We want to know, why can't our students have these resources now without condition? In the coming days, you will hear from a group who has not been asked to weigh in on the proposal that could change the trajectory of their education, the young people at Charleston High School. As professionals and constructivists, we presented students with the facts of the proposal so that they could come to their own conclusions. I urge you to put action behind your stated beliefs about the power of youth voice while remembering that it was until now disregarded in this proposal process. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristin McCain.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, so my name is Kristin McCain. I am a teacher at Charleston High School, and I am also here to speak on the prospectus that was presented to Dr. Casilius that needs to be voted on later this month. You've heard testimony from my colleagues about how inappropriate, unjust, and blatantly privileged this perspective is, and they've spoken on some of the things that the writers got wrong and some things that we would like to see in our school community. But tonight, I'm here to talk on the theme of stability. So as we all know, the COVID-19 pandemic has caused a collective trauma and created a very unstable environment for us all. And as we continue to live through it, we experience that day in and day out. Just within the Boston Public Schools, just to narrow the focus a little bit. If we think about last school year, we spent the majority of last school year on Zoom, going back and forth just in response to the public health advisories. I also want to speak on how, as we all know, the Edwards Middle School was closed in June of this year, so this past spring, as a first step toward actualizing Bill BPS's plan to reconfigure our existing school structures. So I mentioned those two things just to, again, speak on the theme of stability and how if this prospectus, excuse me, were to be approved and the motions would be made to close Charleston High School this spring, it would create chaos within the community that's already established with the staff, the students, in an already very unstable time. I'm very lucky to have a lot of students that I taught last year at Charleston this year, and I know that being able to see them every day has created some sort of calm and peace. Just, so I would love to be able to stay with them, and I know that we as a school are doing quite well, I would say, because we have an established school community that cares about our students, and we would hate to see some of these students that came from the Edwards go through a second school closure. I also want to make mention of the fact that the Irving, the Timelte, and the Jackson Man are slated to close this spring. So while there is no appropriate time to have a hostile takeover, as my colleague Cecil mentioned earlier, this year would definitely not be the time to do so just because there are already three schools that are slated to close. So I know my time is up, but just want to have us think a little bit more about the school community and how it would affect not only the students and families, but the staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alaa Razek.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Alaa Razek. I'm an Arabic language teacher and member of the Charleston High School community. I'm also coming to you with our critique of the innovation prospectus and our ideas for improving our school, and I echo the sentiments shared by my colleagues. Our biggest concern with this prospectus is that zero Charleston High School students, families, and staff were consulted in this matter. What our school really needs is district support for our existing initiatives. BPS should support the current work that Charleston High School is already doing to support our students' learning. Specifically, the district-aligned initiatives at CHS was in many cases among the first to implement. These initiatives include competency-based grading and vertical alignment, restorative justice practices, deeper learning, ethnic studies curriculum and pedagogy, and most notably, the early college and career pathways program, which is an expansion of the existing early college program with Bunker Hill Community College. And currently, within that program, we have 86 early college students, and 100 students are participating in the pre-early college pathways programming. The proposal presented by the innovation prospectus presents BFIT, Leslie, UMass as early college possibilities when Bunker Hill Community College is right down the road from us. So as a community, we ask that you recognize the hard work we are already doing at Charleston High School, and we urge you to reject the proposal for the Charleston Innovation and Inclusion School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Pia Citali.
Hi, my name is Amy Pia Citali, and I am here as a member of the Charleston High School community. I'm here to speak against the prospectus for the Charleston Innovation School. You've heard several times already that this prospectus was developed without consulting a single member of our community, and I want us to stop and think about that for a minute. There are over 700 students and about 100 staff members who call Charleston their educational home, and not one of them had any input into a proposal about the future of our school. Students like staff were blindsided by this proposal. This casts serious doubt onto the claim that all current students would be re-enrolled and welcomed with open arms. A proposal developed secretly behind closed doors is not how one demonstrates welcome. There are so many assumptions made about what would work for our students. Here are two examples related to the extended day proposal. Scholarships to stay until 5:00 PM sound great, but for the many students we have who work 3:00 to 11:00 PM shifts or have family care responsibilities after school, that doesn't actually work. Those students are now excluded from their educational community and would have to start over at a new school. Many of our students, especially our younger students, have families with reservations about them traveling long distances on the tee at night. The 5:00 PM end time, especially during the winter, would cause some of these students to look for another school. These aren't the only examples of assumptions made, but they serve to illustrate a larger point in the limited time that I have to speak to you. The faculty and staff of Charleston High would never dream of ripping the fabric of a school away from our students and replacing it with something else without their input and vision. Setting aside the fact that the timeline for the closure of CHS and opening a new school in its place is wildly unrealistic, the basic principle is this, there should be no plans about us without us. To do otherwise is to discount the passion, care, and brilliance of our current CHS students in an attempt to colonize their building for the benefit of someone else. I thank the committee for its time and attention and urge you to vote against the Charleston Innovation and Inclusion School.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is Deisha Golizada. Deisha, if you're with us and you'd like to speak, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Okay. She's taking a pass. So Ms. Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is quite important to us. Our first action item this evening is charter amendments for the Edward M. Kennedy for Health Careers for school year 2018 to 2023. These amendments, memorandum of understanding A and B, and the accountability plan have been granted preliminary approval by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, approved by the Boston Teachers Union and recommended by the superintendent. I will now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. Dr. Coleman?
I was giving thumbs up on approval.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve EMK's charter amendments, memorandum A and B, and the accountability plan as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRougeau?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next action item is charter amendment request for the Boston Day and Evening Academy for school years 2018 to 2023. You'll recall that BDA head of school Allison Ramyak and BDA program leader Adrian Level presented these charter requests to the committee at our December 1st meeting. These amendments, memorandum of understanding A and B, and the accountability plan have been granted preliminary approval by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, approved by the Boston Teachers Union and recommended by the superintendent. I will now open it up to the committee for final questions and comments. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve BDA's charter amendments memorandum A and B in the accountability plan as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRougeau?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our final action item this evening is the closure of the Washington Irving Middle School in Rosendale, the Jackson Man Keta Aiden Alston, the James P. Timmeltie Middle School, 205 Roxbury Street, Roxbury. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for final comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the Bill PPS team, all of our engagement team, all of our educators and school leaders, interpreters, and translators who helped us work over the past year with the Jackson Man community, with the Timmeltie community, and the Irving community to ensure that they were engaged with and understood the decisions that we were making before them and the reasons why we were making these decisions. And then also, I want to thank my team for the transition coordinators who are each of these schools, supporting families as they move to their next school and make their next choices, as well as the recruitment division and our Office of Human Capital supporting our staff, ensuring that they are valued members of our BPS family, that we want to assure to be able to place them in their next best fit and make sure that they stay with BPS. And so both of those support systems are going out to the schools that are impacted. I also want to thank the families at the Blackstone, the families at the Sumner School, and the families at the Mendel who demanded us to get it right for them and their kids. And that's what this democratic process is all about. And I appreciate their willingness to creatively problem-solve with our team in order to find solutions that would work for their school, their children. in order to find solutions that would work for their school, their children, to be able to have a K six. I'm especially excited that we'll finally take a big step forward in finalizing these pathways, which is what parents asked the school committee to do prior to my arrival, and that we're going to be able to deliver big in getting this pre-K to grade six framework established and now do the hard work that we need to do on the high school side to get our high schools in a really great place so that parents can choose them and B P S really does attract more families at the earliest ages of three and four all the way through their graduation. So thank you again for your continued patience and support as we vote to close officially these three schools tonight and we provide better opportunities in our high schools for them in their future.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to the committee for final questions and comments. Ms. LoPera?
Thank you, Chair Robinson, and my apologies for joining later in the evening. I had a piano recital that I could not miss. It's good to see you, Superintendent Casilius, and fellow committee members. I do have a question. I appreciate the work that's been done, I think in particular with our elementary schools and re-engaging those communities to ensure that we have, we do have the sixth grade expansion in the schools that would be impacted by the closures of these middle schools. I guess what I'm interested in learning more about is how or what supports are we providing for the high schools in ensuring that they are ready and prepared for their seventh and eighth grade expansion and not just in having the physical space or seats, but how are we thinking about supporting students and families with academic rigor and additional quality educational opportunities in those spaces? So if you can just give me more information, that would be really helpful.
I would be glad to do that. Also, in January, we will have an academic report and retreat. I've been working with the chair to have our academic vision tied with our budget and our Bill P P S so that we could talk more about these pathways. And if you'd like, I can just briefly share with you that we have instructional facilitators that we put in the first year. I came here in Boston as we were attempting to do high school redesign before the pandemic hit. So they have also been at seven of our largest schools in order to expand. That includes the English where they are expanding and Brighton and Charlestown and some of the East Boston and others. And so we also are hiring advanced placement and international backglow coordinator at the district level, and that'll help provide additional support. And then as we implement the mass core, there will be additional resources that we will be giving to schools and counseling supports that will be given. You'll hear a little bit of some of these budget Terry items later in Chief Cooter's presentation as well. So lots of work that we will be doing, getting our high schools prepared for the academic rigor, the career readiness, and the vocational education that we want to be doing so that they are highly selected by our student body.
And I do just have one follow-up on that. I appreciate that additional information and also the thinking through getting together in January to learn more about these pieces. We have some incredible high schools in our district, and I know that there are, there are some that usually take up all the oxygen, but there's a lot more that's happening. And I know Dr. Coleman mentioned that at the end of our last meeting and perhaps us needing to do some reexamination on the narratives that exist about some of our schools and how we really engage the community in understanding all of the options that really do exist. I, that's not to say that there isn't work that needs to be done, right? But I do think that it is really imperative for us to truly engage with our community in highlighting where things are going right and also listening and learning where we can be doing more and where we can be doing better. And so I, I just, I keep thinking about this because we do have some quality schools that we're not thinking about currently expanding, or at least we're not talking about currently expanding. And so my question is, how are we thinking about all of these grade configurations and facilities and in having more quality opportunities in more of our schools long-term? Like, are we thinking about a true comprehensive master plan? Where, what is the timeline for working with the community on that with sharing more about just the full, the full plan without just some decisions here, some decisions there?
That's such a good question. It's one that Chair Robinson asks me every time we talk. As we think about how we approach Bill P P S and turn the corner here, one of the things that I talked with Mayor Wu about when she was running and also when she won and as she transitions is about the state of our facilities overall. Anyone who listens to me hears me talk about our facilities and the deferred maintenance and the incredible urgency that I feel around fixing them and making sure that we're giving our children twenty-first century facilities. That is tied into the strong academic plans, because when you talk about having science and life sciences, you need to have labs, right? If you talk about doing the mass core, you need to have gymnasiums because P E is required. So there's a lot of, if you talk about careers, you need to have maker labs and that sort of thing. So there's just a lot of work still yet to be done and with the new mayor and her level of commitment and knowledge about our schools and making sure that she's up to speed. And so I do plan on bringing some more of a comprehensive plan to the retreat in January about how we get there and what the engagements process would look like from January until May, when our typical timeline is for any announcements with Bill P P S. We're also working with our partners at the city Public Works Department. I think it's called Public Facilities Department, P F D, and Dion Irish there, my colleague on the cabinet, about how he can support and how his department can also support this work because they are city buildings. And so as part of thinking about an overall city plan for our schools, we need to also be making sure that there's capacity at the city to handle the kind of scale of the work that I'm proposing that needs to get done in the next ten years for our kids.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Dr. Coleman?
Thank you. This is a tough vote and an uncomfortable vote because we're making a big decision among uncertainty. And so I just want to reiterate the principles I think we're using is that we know, we know that our performance at our middle schools is, is one of our biggest challenges for a whole host of reasons between the exam schools and charter schools and the way other systems, other behaviors outside the system work. This is where we are not well organized. And as we know from the headmaster of Boston Green, when they asked to go to a, a start earlier with seventh and eighth graders, was the idea that they, they wanted those students in their building to prepare them for the high school curriculum, and that's received a lot of success. Their, their, their performance has improved because they're getting kids in that, in those middle years and preparing them. And so we don't know for sure this is going to work, but I'm highly supportive of this decision to go K six, seven, twelve, so that we can address our middle school problems that we, performance problems we have and engage kids earlier and reduce the transition so that they stay engaged. So it, it's, it's an imperfect solution. We don't know whether it's going to work. And so it's always scary to make big decisions in uncertainty, but this is one I support because this guy following the principles of how do we reduce transitions? How do we get kids engaged with adults over time who will facilitate their progress through high school when we know when I, I'm still in the world, I think our worst statistic is the number of kids who enter our high schools. Thirty percent of our kids enter our high schools unprepared to finish. And that to me is, is our, is a problem we have to solve. And I think this principle is one way to get at it, and we need to track the data as Dr. Caselli's point.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Thank you, Señora Presidenta. Valoro mucho que un comentario público que escuché hoy, una persona dijo gracias, Superintendente. Gracias comité de la escuela pública por ser excelente de la equidad y extender el sexto grado a la mende de la zona de la Blast.
Thank you. I really value a comment that was made when the public comments, when someone says, "Thank you, thank you, Superintendent, and thank you to the school committee for having the lens of equity." And I lost that part. Me quedé donde dijo equidad, disculpe, puede repetirlo?
Por ponerse lenta de la equidad y extender al sexto grado a las tres escuelas, Mende, Sumner, y Blasto.
And extend the three schools to sixth grade.
Y eso, eso habla bien de la superintendente y de los esfuerzos que han hecho en esta parte con, con, con hacer la extensión.
And that says a lot about the superintendent and the efforts that's being done to do this extension.
Sin embargo, yo quisiera, tengo algunas, alguna, algunas preguntas y me gustaría que, que pudieran responderla esta noche. Y es algunas inquietudes que tengo con relación a los maestros. ¿Qué va a pasar con los maestros? ¿Qué va a pasar con los contratos de ellos? Ellos van a tener una suspensión de los efectos del contrato dentro de lo que, del trabajo que ellos han estado haciendo en esas escuelas. ¿Qué va a pasar con los alumnos? Van a estar con los maestros.
I have several questions. Run back, excuse me, I have a kid here. Hold on one second. I have several questions on that. And I would like to hear a response regarding the teachers. What's going to happen with the teachers? What is going to happen with their contract? Are they going to be suspended?
¿Qué va a pasar con los custodian, con los empleados? El staff de esas escuelas. ¿Qué va a pasar con cada uno de ellos? Sabemos que es una población que va a quedar sin empleo. Me gustaría saber qué, qué va a pasar con el equipo. Muchísimo. ¿El edificio va a ser vendido? ¿Cómo va a ser? Van a construir un edificio affordable para housing para personas de bajo ingreso. ¿El dinero de la venta de ese edificio va a ir al distrito educativo? ¿Qué va a pasar? Las inquietudes que tengo que me gustaría mucho que pudieran ser contestadas.
I, not only the teachers, but all the staff in those schools, custodians and everyone, are they going to be unemployed? Also, what's going to happen with the building? Are they planning to sell the building? Or is, what's going to happen with the money if they sell the building? Or if not, are they planning to build affordable housing for low-income folks? I have so many questions and I would like to, so what's going to happen? I would like to hear some response for that tonight.
Y por último, tengo entendido que la Irvin hay un programa para estudiantes especiales. ¿Qué va a pasar con esos programas que, que, que son tan importantes para estos estudiantes y sobre todo esa población? ¿Qué, qué, cuál es el plan? No sé, me gustaría escuchar. Y sé que hay mucha gente que también quisiera escuchar.
Also, I heard that there's a special education program at the Irving School. And that program is very important. So I'm wondering, what's the plan? What's going to happen with that population?
Aprecio mucho los comentarios.
And I would appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Palanco Garcia. We are not planning to sell any of the buildings. So those will be repurposed as school buildings. The Jackson Man Building is most likely to come down and be rebuilt as a new K six or pre-K through grade six structure. Dr. Coleman, I'm looking to have preschool in every school. So that will help our enrollment, get, get our families early and young and build our relationships with them. Then with staff, we are providing support to all of the staff in, in order to ensure that they have another good fit wherever they're licensed to teach within B P S. So we're working with them during this early hiring season. Then as far as student programs, our special education office is working with our programs and where those programs will move to, whether it's at the Irving or the Jackson Man or the Timlty, so that we can ensure that there is certainty for the programming. For instance, the programs at the Irving are a nice match for the programs at the English High School. And so we know that that is a good match already. So they're working with that. And we've also assigned a transition specialist at each of the schools to be able to support families, particularly those families who do not speak English or who have students with disabilities who need additional support in making their choice for where they would like to send their child next.
Are you okay, Ms. Palanco Garcia? Fine, thank you. Dr. Coleman, do you have another question? Oh, sorry. Mr. O'Neill?
Superintendent, would you also just please address what Ms. Palanco Garcia brought up as well about the employees, our teachers? And because they're seventh and eighth grade teachers, and we're not getting rid of seventh and eighth grade, right? So most likely, these teachers would end up transferring to a high school that is now expanding to seventh and eighth. I know what Charlestown High, as an example, has put an academy for seventh and eighth grade. East Boston High has put in an academy for seventh and eighth grade. They recognize the special nature of the students that are in seventh and eighth grade and that, and the teachers who specialize in teaching students of that age, right? So could you just please address what Ms. Palanco Garcia also brought up about the employees?
Yeah, I did share that we are hoping that we'll find the best fit for each of these employees and retain them through, especially now with early hiring. And this includes the custodians and the cooks. As you know, we are in a significant labor shortage right now. And every single member of our B P S team is a valued member. And so we'll do everything we can to retain our employees.
Thank you. So I just want to confirm because Ms. Palanco Garcia brings up questions that we hear in the community, right? And people get nervous when they hear closing of a school. So I believe as Dr. Coleman said, this is a perpetuation of the policy that we as a, as a governing body said a while ago that we did not like that we had up to twenty-three grade configurations within B P S. Too many transitions, too much uncertainty for parents. We heard continuously they wanted less transitions. We also heard concerns from many high school leaders about how students were doing in the middle schools. And we knew that there was no research to show that either a K to six, seven to twelve, or a K to eight, nine to twelve model worked better. What we did have was the research was that the middle schools were struggling the most. And I, and I know, Superintendent, you know this extraordinarily well because in fact you were successful turning around middle schools in Memphis years ago. Different time, different place, different city. And, and, but we had parents struggling with the numbers of transitions. So the policy that we set was to become a district that was predominantly, and we know that that was predominantly, and we know that always be a few exceptions, but that we would predominantly be K to six, seven to twelve, or K to eight, nine to twelve. There'll be some of both in that mix. What we would do is phase out middle schools. And so, but that doesn't mean we don't need the buildings. The students are still ours. So I actually appreciate Ms. Palanco Garcia bringing up the question about, well, what happens to the buildings? And is it going to be sold? Is it going to be housing? Because many communities get nervous about that and they think, you know, that that is going on. I believe you have confirmed and we have stated quite clearly in the ones that we have closed to date and in these three middle schools as well, they will become BPS school buildings. They will either become a K to six or they will become a seven to twelve. And that will, that is the case in this case for the three that we are voting on today, which is the Jackson Man, the Irving and the Timolte. There's a lot of requests from our other school buildings to in fact kind of immediately take, take, take over those buildings, right? And expand into them. So if you could just confirm, I think it's really important that we state that as clearly as possible. This is a reconfiguration of our buildings to provide for less transitions for our parents and students. And it is also answering what we heard from many high school leaders who have been asking to go to seven to twelve, even if they do end up putting in an academy in there. But like I said, in both Charleston, East Boston have done that. This is not about, and it is not denigrating in any manner whatsoever our middle schools. You know, I, the Edward School is right around the corner from me and we closed that just recently. The teachers who have specialized in teaching students who were in the sixth, seventh and eighth grade in most cases have ended up in one of these, you know, other high schools that have now expanded. So just the more, I think the more we clarify this, we ease uncertainty and concern in the communities. And and my final comment Superintendent, before you answer, I also want to go on the record to thank you and your team for working with the school communities who who were not initially, who were initially told that it would be a challenge to go from K to five to K to six. The Blackstone, the Mendo and the Sumner. And that you worked and found solutions working with those communities. And I think that makes a huge difference because I, among others, were nervous about the unintended consequences of not going to a K to six and then potentially declining enrollments. So thank you to you and your team for working for those communities very hard over the past couple of weeks to find solutions.
Yeah, definitely. You know, sometimes you don't always get it right on the first time. You admit it and you listen and you move forward. And that's what the team did. They rallied with the school communities in each of these schools. And I think that we have some workable solutions. I wouldn't say they're the best solutions, but they are workable solutions. If they were the best solutions, I think the team would have brought those forward from with the first recommendation. But, you know, sometimes you do things because they're the right things to do, even if they're hard. Second, we are not closing these, but we need these buildings. We absolutely need these buildings. It's almost like a chessboard, you know, that you, we were able to close these middle schools to get to the pathway configurations that the school committee had made that decision prior to my arrival. And then now we can move buildings in and start renovating other buildings because we lacked swing space. We lacked ability to move our schools anywhere. And so we also have the benefit of being able to move other elementary schools into these schools, potentially merging schools and then taking schools and renovating other schools or building new ones on those spots, which we'll probably be doing with the Jackson Man, most likely doing with the Jackson Man spaces there. So, you know, I just want to be very clear, like you said, these, we need the space right now to be able to enact our vision for more buildings and new and new buildings.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Superintendent, I just want to say thank you to you too. I know that delaying this vote did not make you happy, but I am glad that we were able to work through and listen to our communities and come up with solutions moving forward. I also think that this is a signal to all of us about the incredible importance of parent voice in partnerships, that our families want to be part of our solution, care deeply about what is going on in their in their neighborhoods and communities and school communities. And we've had, it's it's time to close the book on the old days when decisions could be made and people would have to just accept them. So I I am looking forward to as we continue to go back and rethink, you know, all of Bill BPS, that we will be better able to set up in advance the kind of communication, conversations, issues with our community so that these votes will be well informed and hopefully easier as we move forward. Thank you. Before we go to the vote, any last comments? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the closure of the Washington Irving Middle School in Roslendale, the Jackson Man K to eight in Alston and the James P. Timolte Middle School in Roxbury. Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Ms. Lopez?
Epstein.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Epstein.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
That's five VAs and two abstentions, the motion passes.
Thank you. Our first report this evening is our annual report from the Office of Equity covering school year 202021. At this time, I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent of Equity Becky Schuster to please present her report. First, I'd like to invite the superintendent to provide opening comments.
Madam Chair, just one, I'm wondering, did we vote just on the Washington Irving? Or do we vote on all of them?
All three.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we have that done.
Yes, it was all three.
Okay, thank you. The the Equity Report is normally a longer report each year, but because we were in remote learning, it's an abbreviated report because the data was very different, because we didn't have all of the interactions we would have typically. So Dr. Grandson and Becky Schuster will provide for you a brief report. And there is additional information in the appendix for your review. And they'll they'll take your questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Superintendent. And I call what the Superintendent shared about this being a typical year in terms of the annual report for the Office of Equity. In addition, I'll just share that we, as always, use this data to support the effective planning and programming across the Division of Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gaps and for work across the district. And this work is interconnected. In addition to the various trainings that the Office of Equity also provides, has historically provided, which will be shared in a report, we will be launching racial equity and leadership training for all eleven thousand BPS employees in phases beginning in the spring. And you'll hear more about that during the presentation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Becky Schuster.
Good evening. Thanks so much for the introduction, Dr. Grandson and Superintendent Cassellius. Appreciate the school committee making time for this report. I know you have a very full agenda this evening and and this year. And I'll just highlight that the report is mandated by the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Policy, which requires the Office of Equity to make this report, I think, for very good reasons that Dr. Grandson was referring to. After six years in this role, and I'm now up to twelve years as a BPS mom, I'm really pleased to be back with you to share the work that I'm very proud of, that our team continues to do each day. If we were in person, you'd see my team literally sitting beside me. But instead, in this virtual setting, they are certainly with me in spirit and certainly are watching and have actively participated in creating the report tonight. My team includes Grace Jung, who's been with us for the longest, who's the Director of Training and Accommodations, Quinell Gomez, who is our Director of Compliance and Title Nine Coordinator, Francesca Jean Pierre, who's the Equity Manager. We have two invaluable Equity Assistants, Chris Mary Gonzalez Torres and Leah Granum. And last but certainly not least, our newest team member Carmen Fonseca, who is our new LGBTQ plus student support manager. And I'll be talking about that new sort of area of work for us this evening. Our team currently has capacity in Spanish, Haitian Creole and Korean. So we are able to serve employees, students and families in multiple languages. And I am proud every day to serve with this team. Going to share my slides now. So the mission of the Office of Equity is to ensure that the Boston Public Schools is a place where every worker can thrive, every student can thrive, where each of us who works and learns in the BPS community does so unimpeded by bias, unimpeded by discrimination, where we are welcomed, we are affirmed in who we are and valued for exactly the entirety of who we are. We have three key priorities. We aim to provide a prompt, effective response to any incident that might be bias-based or sexual in nature, inappropriate in some way, and also to respond to requests for disability, pregnancy and religious accommodations. We conduct extensive training and educational programs that are aimed to make sure that our students, our employees, and sometimes our families as well, are aware of their rights and responsibilities related to preventing bias-based conduct and sexual misconduct. And and also training that assists us to bring an equity lens to everything we do as we relate to one another as human beings and also as we give instruction, make operational decisions and change policies. And thirdly, we partner with other offices in the Division of Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gaps to ensure that every key decision, every significant initiative that is made by a school or by the central office is held to an equity lens, first and foremost, to a racial equity lens. And I want to pause to just thank the Superintendent who keeps Equity at the center on a just daily basis and Dr. Grandson, who has just been an unwavering support to our team and to me personally. This year has not been an easy year for our team. It has not been an easy year for our school leaders, for our employees in every area of the district. And Dr. Grandson brings a human spirit and integrity to the work that makes a big difference to the Office of Equity's ability to fulfill our mission. So in this particular school year, in terms of training and education, we completed roughly the same number of training sessions as we did the previous year, although the overwhelming bulk were in a remote setting. The significant shift that I want to highlight here because most of this training is very consistent with the previous year, but I want to highlight for you the forty-nine LGBTQ student support training sessions that our first LGBTQ Student Support Manager, DJ Rock, conducted during that school year. This is transformational work. This is giving our folks who are on the ground, interacting with students, our teachers, our social workers, our school leaders and central office personnel who support them, the information they need to do right by our LGBTQ students. And I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. And the last piece of our training work that you've been hearing about for the last three years is our twenty-four seven Respect Program. And this is a program, this is our third year offering this program. Very proud of it. You may recall that the video that we created won a national tele award and the curriculum that goes with it, along with the video, is now available for free to any district in the country. And on a very regular basis, we have districts across the country reaching out and asking to implement the program. At BPS this year, it was a mandatory program for all of our middle and high school students. So every sixth through twelfth grader in the district participated in at least one class period discussing the video. I want to mention that we did not, in the past, you would have seen on this list remedial sessions for our students who were found to violate an equity policy. Those were on hold this year. But they were also less needed because in a few minutes, when you see our data, you'll see that the number of incidents involving students went down considerably because our students were not interacting, unfortunately, in the way that we wish they could have had the opportunity to do in our school buildings. Also, this year, we increased our affinity group work, particularly in the wake of the murder of George Floyd. Our our staff in the central office, our staff in schools were yearning for opportunities to connect with one another in race-based affinity groups. And I have partnered with Rashawn Martin, who's the Director of Intention Programs and Services for Educators of Color in the Office of Recruitment, Cultivation and Diversity, to support that work. And in particular, my job is to support the groups for white people who want to do consistent work in our own learning around racism and becoming more and more effective at being anti-racist. So I have led that work along with a team of others that grows consistently. For example, last year, we had a total of eight of those affinity groups in the central office alone. Also worked this past year with Shakira Ford Walker to pilot the BPS Dialogues on Race, which is now a curriculum available to any central office department and any school and multiple schools have now rolled that out. In terms of our formal responses to concerns, we responded to over twelve hundred this year. That's a fairly consistent number with the previous year. But the composition of that caseload changed tremendously because we saw a big reduction, as I mentioned earlier, in the number of student-on-student incidents and a multi, multiple-fold increase, a geometric increase in the number of requests for disability and pregnancy accommodations in particular. We responded to well over eight hundred requests. This is because obviously during the pandemic, we have many hundreds of employees who had underlying health conditions that made them more vulnerable to the virus should they contract it and who were seeking to work remotely. And we responded to all eight hundred and fifty-seven of those employees. The one thing I wanted to highlight in terms of the student-on-student incidents is that we did have to learn fast about the phenomenon known as Zoom bombing. This was an issue that cropped up early on in remote learning. And in partnership with our Office of Instructional and Informational Technology, we learned together about how to prevent those incidents from happening. And over time, I'm pleased to say that the number of those incidents decreased tremendously. And we found that very few of them were any longer being, had any involvement by our own students. They tended to be outsiders who had managed to break through security protocols. But we were able to reduce those tremendously over time. In terms of the incidents, In terms of the incidents that were reported to us, as I mentioned, we saw a significant decrease in the numbers that involved student to student. So the proportions were a little bit different this year than in past years. In terms of the investigations conducted by the Office of Equity, generally these involve allegations that an employee engaged in bias-based conduct or sexual misconduct. We very rarely investigate student incidents. When it says student-on-student incident, generally we coach a school leader or they're designated to conduct a school-based investigation. But for the investigations conducted by our team, it's that red bar that's the most important to us, that we see the number of violations declining. Now, every issue that's brought to us is telling us that something's not working well. So even if we don't find that there was a violation of a policy, we always do our best to leave the situation better than we found it. We apply restorative justice, we use coaching, we use mediation, we do educational programming. There's, we always try to address the underlying issues that are being brought to us. But the number of actual violations of our policies continues to decrease. And that is good news. In terms of the groups that folks were a member of, who brought concerns to us, these percentages were fairly consistent. I think the only noteworthy trend is you can see that there was a significant number this year of students bringing concerns around sexual orientation. We attribute this to the work of our LGBTQ plus Student Support Manager, raising awareness that we should not tolerate any form of targeting of a student based on their sexual orientation, either real or perceived or guessed. So in terms of a little bit more about our first year of having an LGBTQ Student Support Manager, a few key accomplishments. I already mentioned the extensive training that we achieved. We also ran a number of Zoom support.
I think we're hearing some background noise from an interpreter. If you could please make sure you're on mute. Thank you, Becky. I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you. We also provided in partnership with the Office of Health and Wellness, coaching for gender sexuality alliances in our schools and held our annual BPS LGBTQ plus Student Summit. This time it was remote. I got to spend some time on the summit and it was a spirited event that gave our students the opportunity to connect, which they very much needed. And during this year, we began to hone our strategy, which we are continuing to do this year, to figure out how to utilize this new position to maximize impact for our students. We cherish our LGBTQ students in the Boston Public Schools. The overwhelming majority are also young people of color. So that intersection of their experience in terms of their identity, in terms of sexual orientation and gender identity, as well as racial identity, means these are some of the students who need us most. And our team is proud to prioritize them, to take every step we know how to increase the supports they receive on the school level and on the district level when it's needed. So special welcome to Carmen Fonseca, who will be carrying on this work. This year, we continued to work together with the Office of Opportunity Gaps to provide internal consultancies around issues of equity. The Office of Equity particularly gets involved with operational issues, whereas the expertise around instruction dwells more in the Office of Opportunity Gaps. We continue to grow capacity for the racial equity planning tool through training and producing exemplars of what, how that process should work and what a completed tool should look like and how that tool process, that equity analysis should impact our decision-making, our implementation. And I do sit on the multi-departmental team that meets every week during hiring season to monitor our recruitment efforts. Who's getting interviewed? Who's getting selected? What's happening on the ground? We have a beautiful dashboard that we're able to monitor on the school to school level. What's happening with each position? And intervening in every way we know how to increase the number of educators of color. And I know you got to hear Serendalee's report very recently, so you know that this work is moving the needle. And proud to be a part of it. And as Dr. Grantson mentioned earlier, this is my last slide. This speaks to our goals for the coming year. In 2019, there was an executive order that every city of Boston employee participate in racial equity and leadership training. We've been working with the mayor's office on resiliency and racial equity to roll out the training for BPS in a way that is tailored to the specific needs of our workforce and consistent with our past efforts, our opportunity and gap, and achievement gap policy, our equity protocols, our past anti-racism training, and making sure that this training builds on the past work. So we're looking forward to rolling that out to all employees. And depending on which employee group they'll participate in one, two, or all three modules of that training. And lastly, we try to continue to be versatile and ready as the pandemic alters the quantity and nature of our work day-to-day as a team. We are being nimble and figuring out at all times how to have the appropriate capacity, staffing, workflow to meet the needs that are coming in on our phones through our email every day. And to be partnering with schools and supporting them in every way we can around issues of bias or sexual misconduct. So that is my report and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schuster, for your report. And many thanks to your entire team for their hard work on this critical issue. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Dr. Coleman? No.
You left the speechless. It's so good.
Yeah. Just double checking with everyone.
I care if I may just thank Ms. Schuster and her team for the hard work. This is, it's been great to see since this office has been set up and the progression over years. The slide, the slide, Ms. Schuster, that you showed of the number of formal investigations going down is interesting. How do you think it has been impacted though by the year of being remote? And what is the feedback that you're getting as we go into this year? And now that our students and our employees are back, you know, full-time, you know, we're seeing a number of issues around how folks are dealing with that, particularly when they've lost the year of social interactions, right? And are you expecting, when I, when I look at that slide that you showed of the types of complaints, racial, sexual orientation, religious, et cetera? You know, what is your expectation? What, what are you looking at, trying to look around the corner from the repercussions of our students being back?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Very long question there.
I, I understand and it's an important and, and very timely question. One of the challenges of measuring progress in the work that we do in the Office of Equity is when you see an increase in reports of incidents, one wonders, is that a success? Because incidents are being reported? Or is that a trend that is disturbing, that needs to be addressed? Because it's an increase in off-track behavior? So that's a tension that we feel and we try to get underneath those numbers to try to figure out what's really going on. To give an example from the public realm, when we saw the Me Too movement that created momentum for women in particular to come forward about sexual misconduct, we heard a lot more about sexual misconduct in the public discourse and the press for a period of time. I don't think that's because sexual misconduct was increasing. I think that's because reporting was increasing, right? So similarly, it, when, when we see increases and certain types of reports to us, we kind of sit together and try to think about, what does this mean? Is this because, for example, the 24/7 Respect Program is now in our classrooms and all of our middle and high school classrooms? So students know that we welcome them and encourage them to come forward with their concerns. That's what we're always hoping. That being said, I bet that everyone in this, that is sitting in this meeting has had negative impacts from COVID. We've been at home, we've been lonely, we've been cut off from people that we care about. We've lost people. Many, many of our students and our staff were deeply impacted by this time period and it's not over. And we know that when human beings are in pain, both personal pain because of loss, economic, human, the loss of human life, of health, and when systemic racism and other forms of systemic oppression, if anything, are accentuated by this health crisis, we start to see people not behaving well, not being their best selves. And so I do expect we'll see our numbers go up this year for that reason. But I will interpret it both in terms of a red flag that young people and adults are waving to let us know that they need more support. And I will interpret it as a success when students in particular have the courage to come forward and say, I'm not getting treated right by my peer, I'm not getting treated right by this adult. So that's my best answer for you.
Thank you, Ms. Schuster. And just as a follow-up question, what power do you have when you do an investigation and you find a wrongdoing? What power do you have to affect change?
Great question. So I'll answer them in two parts. The first is the sort of immediate practical. Our role at the end of an investigation is to make recommendations. It is ultimately the decision of the, because our investigations involve employees, it's ultimately the decision of the supervisor in partnership with us about what next steps to take, our roles to make a recommendation. In the bigger picture, we're, as I mentioned earlier, we're always looking to leave things better than we found them. So for example, if we see two similar incidents in a school over a period of time, that's letting us know something. If we see more than two, even more so, we're finding out something's not working here. How can we help? So we have a relationship with both a mediation group as well as a few restorative justice practitioners who we partner with to try to go into classrooms, to, to meet with working groups to try to move things forward and figure out what needs to be addressed in that setting. So yeah, so it's that twofold. There's the immediate response in terms of discipline, training, code of conduct, et cetera. And then there's the broader response when we see something that doesn't seem to be just at the individual level.
But what happens when, you know, you have an example where someone files a complaint, say the supervisor is discriminating against them? And you investigated and agree and the supervisor says, no, I'm not. Or you see a patent, pattern continue. Do you have the power to go to the superintendent or go to Office of Human Resources or go to deputy superintendents and affect change? And how do you make that happen?
Yeah. So first, I'll just make a distinction that when we conclude an investigation, it's a determination of whether a BPS policy was violated. Like, so discrimination is a legal term. We are attorneys or we're not acting, some of us are, but we are not acting in the capacity of attorneys. We're not a court, we're not a civil rights law enforcement agency. So we conclude whether there was a violation of BPS policy, whether there was bias-based conduct, not whether there was discrimination.
Thank you for that clarification.
No, no problem. So we then make recommendations, as I said. There are individuals that do not belong interacting with, you know, don't belong in the Boston Public Schools. And when necessary, we will recommend that the district seriously consider not retaining someone. But that's a rare exception. Most of the incidents that we see are an opportunity for coaching, for training, for restorative conversation, for learning. And the overwhelming majority of the people that we make findings against, we only meet them once. They, they learn from what happened and go forward better.
Thank you. Thank you for your work and your whole teams.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. LaPera?
Hi, I'm, um, thank you so much for, for your work and for that informative report. I'm trying to, one of the pieces that you just mentioned is that there are always extreme cases, but for the most part, there are learning opportunities. I'm curious to understand, what is the role of the individual who perhaps makes the report in determining whether the findings feel adequate or accurate? And the kind of next steps for resolution feel justified? So I'm curious to understand, what is the role of the person who makes the report in this?
Yeah, we're always interested in hearing from the person who makes the report to understand what they feel would resolve the situation. Sometimes someone says, all I want is an apology. Or, all I want is, you know, to switch to be the paraprofessional in the other second grade classroom instead of this one. Because it's just that relationship is just not going well. And could I please just switch, whatever? So we absolutely listen to the employee and what they're looking for. Sometimes what they're asking for is something we can very much partner to make happen. And sometimes it's not, either because of practicalities that are in the way, for example, contractual obligations. Or sometimes the employees, what, what they're asking for may not be proportional in each, in either direction to what we find occurred. So we're always interested in hearing. Whenever possible, we want to honor that voice of, of the individual who experienced the conduct and also take into account the findings of fact in terms of determining next steps.
And do we track anything related to that? Right, so this is going to sound, not going to sound correct. There's got to be a different way to phrase this. But do we track like the satisfaction rate of the folks who come forward with a complaint? And whether they feel it was adequately resolved or not? Is that something we look into?
Not exactly as you phrased it. I guess what's tricky is this. We dwell in a society where those of us who are members of groups that are on the oppressor end of systems of oppression, don't always have an accurate view of, of what should come out of a situation. And those of us who have experienced oppression over and over again, bring a whole lifetime to the moment of experiencing an incident today. So I think the job of the Office of Equity is to listen to all parties, to do everything we can to try to determine as accurately as possible what actually occurred and to be as objective as possible. And I am very, very, very fortunate to have Quinell Gomez as our Director of Compliance and Title IX Coordinator, because she is a deeply objective person, a fantastic listener, and is able to sift through a whole lot of data coming in and voices coming in to get to, I think, very accurate findings and recommendations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have one. Again, thank you so much for the report. I know you've been doing all kinds of training for. all kinds of training for a number of years within school communities. And, you know, I'm wondering, what kind of change do you see happening? Are there schools where you can really see the impact of what you're doing? Are there other parts of our district where in spite of training, there's very little movement? And if so, how do those kinds of things get addressed? How do you give schools feedback on how they're doing as they move forward in this work?
Yeah, that is a great question and a big question and and a complex question. Because the work is not linear or cumulative always. It's a winding road, and also there's turnover, right? So at a given school, we might see progress, progress, progress. Oh, turnover, new leader, oops, you know, we need to, you know, shift focus. We need to figure out how are we gonna meet the needs of those new folks while still building with the folks who already have the foundation? Or we might see uneven progress. We might have a contingent who's been at this work for a really long time and is really engaged in a very thoughtful and complex way in the in the work of anti-racism or in the work of meeting the needs of our students who are special education students or who have deep knowledge of multiple community immigrant communities and meeting the needs of English learners, while other folks in the school have had very little contact. You know, as a white person, for example, have had very little contact with people different from themselves. And so we will have both of those elements in a school community. And it's extremely challenging to design one arc of learning for all of those folks. And so I think what we try to do is, and that's part of the goal of the racial equity and leadership training that's coming up this spring, trying to set a foundation so that there's a base of terminology, concepts, commitments that everyone shares, and then to do everything we can to lift collectively from there. So I don't know if I answered your question, Chair, because it's not easy work. And I've seen some communities really move forward and that, you know, two steps forward, one step back. I would say where we see the most growth over time is the schools with the lowest turnover, a consistent leader who has really made a personal commitment themselves to be on a learning journey. Because, you know, the fact is, none of us know everything about every aspect of racism or other forms of oppression. Some of us may be incredibly well-versed in the Cabo Veridian community and have a lot to learn about our Dominican students and their life experience. So we, if if the school leader models that kind of humility and that commitment to ongoing learning, and there isn't a lot of turnover, we can really see growth over time. As that school leader welcomes opportunity gaps folks in to do the ongoing work around culturally and linguistically sustaining practices, and they welcome the Office of Equity to coach them when incidents occur. As they welcome that partnership with Dr. Grandson's division, then we can really see systemic change.
Just quickly add to the opportunity that we have before us with the great structure we have in place now, with the school-based Equity Round Tables is to develop those into a place where we get to that that body being able to provide equity audits for the school and and those communities and to be able to collect that data and have some sort of baseline to move from.
Dr. Grandson, I think we also talked about the vision of badging.
Yes, yes, I didn't want to let the cat out of the bag, but that was, that's absolutely has been another area. And we've looked at framing around equity champions. And so how do we set a standard for what we want in cross schools, whether it be diversity in hiring, reducing incidents in the school, promoting things like twenty-four respect and having a measure for for those things, and of course, closing gaps.
Great. Thank you. Again, thank you all for your work. Are there any last questions? No? All right. Again, thank you so much, Schuster.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great. Alrighty. We'll now move on to our next report, which is the financial update. At this time, I'd like to invite Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter to please present his report. First, I'd like to invite the superintendent to give opening comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm excited for Chief Cooter to speak to our budget for our next fiscal year. We have been in constant communication with the mayor, and I am pleased to report that she is very supportive of the school district and our students and their full recovery. I am also working to hammer out our schedule of hearings with you, of course, as we listen and engage with our school leaders and our school community and and get feedback into this really important budget moving into the next school year. Chief Cooter will outline our process and where we're headed, and then afterward, I'll take questions and maybe add a little bit more context. So thank you. I'm very proud of his entire team that worked really hard on this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, members of the School Committee, Chairperson Robinson. My name is Nate Cooter. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here representing my team this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present on this evening and on our financial progress. BPS continues to be in a strong financial health, thanks to continued support from the City of Boston and the mayor. We've been able to maintain this health despite uncertain times of the pandemic. And as CFO, I can tell you that this last year has been one of the most challenging of my career. Because of that, I would be remiss if I didn't start by acknowledging my incredible team. The finance team has forty-five members across six teams, from purchasing and accounts payable to analysts and accountants. They are all knowledgeable, dedicated, and hardworking. We all strive to live out the three core values of the finance division, to be watchdogs for equity, to promote transparency, and to partner with our community to better serve students. Our first core value is equity. And I open most, if not all, of our presentations with this quote from the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Policy. It is the starting point for all of our planning, and therefore, it's a fitting starting point for tonight's presentation. Tonight, I'll be presenting on three fiscal years and provide an update on where we stand as a district. We'll discuss fiscal year twenty-one, which ended on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, FY twenty-two, which is our current fiscal year, and then, as the superintendent mentioned, I'll preview FY twenty-three. We will, of course, present our full budget for FY twenty-three to this committee on February second, twenty-twenty-two for this fiscal year that will start on July first. If you walk away with only two takeaways tonight, I hope it's that, one, we as a district have been consistent in our high-quality management of our fiscal resources. And two, despite the challenges we face at this point in the pandemic, we have the financial resources to make important progress for our students. I'll start this evening by talking about fiscal year twenty-one, which closed on July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Last year's budget, we were able to close with a positive balance of twenty-five thousand thirty-nine dollars. You know, it is an often misconception of the finance team that we are interested in controlling spending and making sure and and stopping people from for spending money. Really, what we want to do is use our resources well and maximize the resources in any given fiscal year on our current students. It's an important part of our fiscal stewardship to make sure that the money we're allocated through the school committee and by the taxpayers are used to serve the students in that fiscal year. In any given year, there are places where we have overspending and underspending areas that allow us to balance our budget to that close of a number. The, in the area of over expected or higher-than-expected costs were food services, employee severance, and employee salaries. Last year was a year in which food services, of course, with the disruption of service, we had lower participation rates, and we continued to maintain payments for all of our employees. This caused us to have a negative balance on that federal food grant, which is a revenue-based federal grant, a federal program that caused some significant financial challenges for us. Areas where we saw a lower-than-expected or lower-than-budgeted expenditures, of course, in workers' compensation, contracted services, utilities, and health insurance. Utilities, of course, with most of the year, schools not being open, we were able to save a significant amount of money in that area. I want to again thank our accounting team, our grants team, and our business services team. There's a ton of transactions that need to happen for us to finalize a fiscal year for a billion-dollar budget with over a hundred and eighty different departments managing or schools managing budgets. And so I just want to thank them for the hard work that they did to get us here. Moving to fiscal year twenty-two, our current fiscal year that will run through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, we are confident at this point in the year that we will close on balance. It's pretty typical at this point in the year for us to forecast negative balance of five to ten million dollars as we start to understand our run rates, as we start to fully staff our schools and programs and get our first look at how we, what's the rate at which we are spending money. This is also the first time that we present an update to you, the school committee, on our monthly budgets. And we will commit to submitting a new report to you each month, updating you on our progress of spending. At this point in the year, we are projecting an even balance. We are projecting to close on budget. That is an abnormal, abnormally optimistic projection for this point in the year. And there's some places where we are having higher costs. Transportation, we are seeing higher costs again this year due to the extra cost of our COVID protocols. In food services, despite the fact that we've returned in person, we are seeing additional challenges. This is a place where our vacancy rates for employees, these are hard-to-staff positions at this point in the pandemic, and of course, we've nationally been talking about low unemployment rates, the lowest unemployment rates we've seen in this country since the sixties. That unemployment rate means it's hard-to-staff positions. The result is that we've been relying on our third-party vendors to provide pre-plated meals at many of our schools that have full kitchens and cafeterias. The result of those meals are higher preparation costs and higher food costs that lead to us not generating as much revenue in that program. There's also, for those of you who have seen our high grocery bills when you go to the local supermarket, the same thing is true in commodity prices for our food services. We're seeing much higher costs in that area. We're also seeing higher costs in utilities, though it is very early in the year, and there's a lot of factors that will go into the shift in that projection. The areas of this fiscal year where we do see lower costs than expected, the biggest area is in salaries. Last year, we did invest in a lot of positions, and we did hire of more people, but because we still see a high vacancy rate, we're having challenges staffing at many of our schools. As you've been aware in some of the updates that Al Taylor has presented, we are running extra salary savings that we haven't seen in prior years. This is the largest factor in our overall good news in terms of our projected close. Last year, we introduced a framework anchored in three guiding principles: return, recover, and reimagine. This continues to be the lens through which we organize our support for schools and students. A critical component of returning well was an investment in additional custodians. As the superintendent said in her opening comments this evening, our custodians have ensured that all students have equitable, healthier, and consistently cleaner buildings across all of our schools for our staff and community members. We also launched our investments in student and family supports with the allocation of a full-time nurse in every school and built on that foundation with family liaisons to cultivate trust and support families and social workers to support the social, emotional needs of our students. This investment, of course, started before the pandemic, even we knew how the extent to which it was going to be disruptive for our families, but it has only proven to be a more important as we, a more important priority as we return and recover. This slide provides important updates both on the hiring and the distribution of employees by race and then provides some key highlights in each area of how these investments are going to support our students. My colleague Ava Mitchell, Chief Ava Mitchell, is here to answer specific questions that you may have about our federal funding, our ESER Parts Two and Three funding. But this slide is an overview of the timeline to date on ESER funding. Our SR two application was submitted to DESI in July, and we received the funds in September. ESER Part Three was submitted in October, and we're awaiting DESI approval. District-wide, SR two and SR Investments, SR Three Investments were distributed from the time DESI approved the funding through November. The school distribution timeline of SR Part Two funding depended on the timing of their proposal submissions from each individual school. We did a lot to review on those and provide appropriate guardrails for the spending on school expenditures. And the final school disbursement of funds will happen this month. On January twentieth, the superintendent and Chief Mitchell are reconvening our ESER Commission to discuss the cross-school innovation and community partnership investment strategy, some of the cornerstones of our SR Three plans going forward. I mentioned at the start that one of our goals on the finance team is to continue to be transparent in how we plan, how we spend, and how we're using all of our funds across the district. Each month, we provide you with a Excel document that is our monthly budget projection. But the superintendent has pushed us to, and we are excited to announce a new partnership with Alavue, an education finance technology company to help us upgrade our processes and our transparency. Internally, we're referring to this as our Fiscal Transparency Project. It's building upon some of the tools that we've published online regarding our budget, but we are hoping to provide more public-facing tools for you to dig into our expenditures and understand where is a district our resources are going. There's also internal tools to help our budget managers. This is in partnership with our other divisions to really make sure that our budgets are strategically aligned to what we're trying to do as a district and what outcomes we're hoping to get as a district. And to our dearly our, our, I was about to say dearly departed, but that's not the right phrase for our departing school committee member, Mr. Coleman, that as we start to align our outcomes to all of our spending, this is going to be an important tool to achieve that goal, and I'm really excited about the possibilities that come with that with that, with that tool. Finally, looking ahead to fiscal year twenty-three, our budget that will begin in July one. At this point in the process, we've already begun planning for the next fiscal year. This is the fiscal year that we will present our school budget on February second to you. And each year, the first step of the budget process is to estimate the number and needs of our students we will serve. This is both practically and strategically important. Practically, it helps us ensure that we have the capacity in the teaching staff to meet the needs of the students we expect to enroll. Strategically, by starting with enrollment projections, we start the process by coming to a common understanding of who we will serve so that we can build our budgets based around the needs of those students. It is unfortunately the case that we continue to experience declines in enrollment across our schools. This is largely due to broader demographic trends, where there are fewer students living in Boston and entering our school district as birth rates decline and the cost of living continues to rise. Our plan is to continue to support schools through this period of instability. We know this is only a short, short-term solution. That is, providing additional non-enrollment based funding to schools is a short-term solution. Cause we need to make bigger system-wide changes. And we will do that over time, but there's simply not enough time in this given year to influence the next school year. Cause we want to do that as we demonstrated tonight with the long process to do the reconfiguration of our middle schools. We want to make sure that we're forecasting and engaging with our communities over a longer period of time. An important factor is that our current enrollment is the most important factor for estimating how many students we anticipate serving in future years. In particular, our entry grades, K zero, K one, K two, those grades serving three, four and five-year-olds represent our best opportunity to grow enrollment and keep families in the city. If we don't enroll the students in those early grades, we often don't see them enroll in BPS. The decline of forty eight hundred students in the element, elementary grades over the last five years is significant. But to put it in perspective, I want to highlight the median elementary school in Boston is two hundred and eighty-eight students. That means that we have lost the equivalent of about seventeen schools worth of elementary school students over this period. Of course, we have not closed that many schools, nor are we preparing to close any additional schools next year. But this highlights the scope of the challenge that we are facing as a district. This next chart explains the relationship between the number of births that we have in the city to Boston residents and the size of that early childhood cohort of students that I mentioned is so critical to our overall long-term trends. For each year, and if you look at the leftmost bar starting in two thousand and eleven, those are students, those are children who were born in the two thousand and eleven year in to Boston-based residents. There were eight thousand children born to Boston residents in two thousand and eleven. Five years later would be school year sixteen, seventeen, the fall of twenty sixteen. That bar represents how many students we enrolled in the district. So that combination of the two numbers shows our capture rate as a district. How many of the students who are born, how many children who are born do we see enroll in our district five years later? What you can see from this chart is two things. First, the last two years, we have seen a decrease in capture rate, which we attribute to the COVID interrupted years. That we have seen a drop in the percentage of students that are rolling in K two kindergarten in BPS. We hope to see that capture rate increase, but even if that capture rate increases, we're likely to see a decrease in the number of students we enroll because we have seen a decrease in the number of births um over the last ten years. We also look to the total enrollment by grade band. By parsing into these grade bands, we're able to estimate the overall impact of our system. You'll know in prior years, I talked a lot about the size of the cohorts that were exiting high school. The class that is now a sophomore in college was the last of the large classes that was moving through the high school sys, high school grades. Now, in the middle grades and high school grades, we're projecting stable cohorts for several years. But the decrease in elementary grades means that we're likely to see ten years or more of decreasing enrollment if current trends don't change. Now, the superintendent has a lot of plans and pro-enrollment strategies that we're going to enact. As um we've talked about earlier, we think the reconfiguration of K elementary schools to K to six will help increase our capture rate and keep students from exiting the system. But these are all strategies that we need to maintain our current enrollment and we need to continue to invest in the quality schools and in our quality guarantee to attract more families and increase our capture rate for the number of students. Because overall, citywide, the number of students, school-aged children is decreasing. This is a scatter plot, um and I'll attempt to walk people through it. For us data nerds, we love this chart um as a way of displaying data. It shows two data points for each one of our schools. The vertical axis shows the percentage of a school that is black and Latinx. The horizontal axis shows how full the school is. Schools on the top left have a high percentage of black and Latinx students, but are only partially full. The schools on the lower right have a lower percentage of black and Latinx students, but are near capacity for enrollment. In a weighted student funding system, the more full a school is, the more non-classroom resources they can afford. Counterintuitively, though, it is also likely the case that those schools that are least, that those schools are the ones that are least expensive to operate on a per pupil basis. The schools on the left of this chart are more likely to have fewer opportunities and yet are more expensive to operate per student. Another important in reason for viewing this information is that enrollment declines are impacting schools that disproportionately serve students of color. For this reason, we believe our commitment to support schools outside of weighted student funding is an important racial equity strategy. It is also true that we need to a- address the underlying systems and structures that create these enrollment challenges for schools so that we can deliver on the superintendent's vision for guaranteed quality education, no matter what school a student attends. Over the last years, we've seen a disproportionate decrease in enrollment for our general education students. The combination of increased concentration of need and the current special education program significantly limits our ability to react to enrollment declines. It is the case that as we lose more general education students and we keep or maintain a higher percentage of special education in all of our schools. This changes the profile of need and the way that we think about serving our students in all different settings. We want to provide some context and data around how many students are exiting the system, meaning current students who are enrolled, who we anticipate leaving the district the following year versus the number of students who are new to the district. It's often the case that people talk about the fact that BPS is quote unquote losing students, that this is somehow a reaction to the quality of our schools or to the experience of our schools. What we have found is, over the last five years, we have seen a decrease in newly enrolled students more than it is a decrease or students exiting the system. These configuration changes have led to a decrease in exiting in the upper elementary grades. And we did see a one-year decrease in total or a sort of one-year increase. Excuse me, a decrease in both exits and new arrivals in that COVID year. So we see that as sort of a, that two thousand and twenty year, you see a dip in the overall numbers. Um, but it is the case that we have fewer students arriving than we have typically exit at our points. And this is important context as we begin to plan and respond to some of these enrollment numbers. We also wanted to highlight the number of schools and sort of name explicitly some of the schools where we see the largest enrollment shifts. At this point in the year, we have released school budgets to schools, their initial allocations and enrollment projections. So it's not uncommon for um school leaders to reach out to you as a school committee member or for there to be starting some public conversations about what schools are worried about their enrollments. What we see is on the left are examples of schools that have large enrollment decreases. In this case, greater than a ten percent enrollment decrease. But we don't estimate that they have classrooms that they can close. That means that these are schools that will likely need additional financial support out of weighted student fund, outside of weighted student funding to be able to maintain the non-classroom experiences for their students. The middle column represents schools where we see large enrollment decreases where we centrally estimate that there may be some capacity changes that we can make. That is to say, these are schools that we may have in one year, four third-grade classrooms. And the next year, we're estimating that they can serve their students with only three classrooms. Those are schools where you'll see enrollment, you'll see budget decreases, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the student experience, the non-classroom experiences will change for those students. Now, of course, it is very early in the process. We are both reviewing the accuracy of these projections and working with all of these schools. So it shouldn't be taken that these are the schools that will either see enrollment or budget decreases, excuse me, or it's schools where they will be accessing teachers and they will be losing some of the teachers that they have. We're just starting the work. We just wanted to give you an early preview of some of the schools and share with you the types of challenges that we're facing as a district. And of course, we see um a number of schools where we do have places of enrollment increasing. The top section we have highlighted are bill BPS related. In some cases, these are schools that either are affected by the estimated closures and the closures of the schools that we just voted on tonight. Or there are schools that are adding a grade level as part of the reconfiguration, in the case of the GREU and JFK, for example. The other three schools, Brighton High School, BTU Pilot School and Madison Park are places where we're just seeing increased enrollment overall. Madison Park in particular, this is a good news story for us. We have seen multiple years of increased enrollment at Madison Park as students have started to respond to some of the changes and the good work that they're doing um at that school. The final slide is just a summary of some of the key points for tonight. If you're going to look at one slide or reference one slide again, we asked if this is it, that really talks about the importance of those cohorts and the size, the biggest driver of future enrollment being the current year enrollment. We really wanted to talk about the decreases in those early grades as challenges that we face. Um, and that we estimate that over time, that we think because these cohorts of students are much smaller, that we anticipate future year um decreases in enrollment and we'll be planning for that. That'll be part of the strategic conversation we'll need to have, as the superintendent mentioned at the retreat um a- after the first of the year. Finally, tonight, um as you all know, we're just starting our budget process and there's a lot of work ahead. We look forward to continued work and engagement with the broader community, with the school committee, of course, and with each school community to plan for individual school budgets. As I mentioned already, we'll present the superintendent's recommended budget to the school committee on February second. In the meantime, I just wanted to provide some important context. We, of course, were talking about those schools that are having enrollment declines. Similar to last year, we will be offering more financial support outside of weighted student funding. And we've provided schools with declining enrollment, funding on top of their existing allocations. We released those initial planning allocations to school leaders on Monday and they'll be working with their school communities over the next few weeks. And will, they'll each have to submit their initial budgets to us and we start what we call the budget collab process on January tenth. It's important to note at this point in the process that for many of these schools, supplemental funding will not be fully recommended or it's she will not be fully reflected in their initial allocations because we still need to have multiple conversations and work with them individually. And so we've asked school leaders that if they have concerns, they should be working with our finance team. But as you start to hear inevitably at this time of year, this is the place where families will start to see their budget and growing concerned. They should know that we, until we present our budget on February and then really throughout the school committee budget process, there's still time for us to work with individual schools and we're committed to maintaining the student experience. Of course, the superintendent is not satisfied with simply maintaining. What we really need to do is continue to invest in and have strategic conversations that allow us to guarantee high-quality education in every single school. We've been fortunate to leverage the city's unparalleled financial support to build this quality guarantee using that three-year hundred million dollar commitment. We're still working to guarantee a baseline of services across all schools, but it started with student family supports, as I mentioned earlier, launching our investment with family supports, including nurse, family liaisons and social workers. This year, we're planning to prioritize school-based academic counselors. We're designing the best way to support all schools pre-K through twelve to understand the post-pandemic profile of our learners. We also need to make guarantees in curriculum and academics. Our goal is to create robust and rigorous academic programs and academic pathways across all schools. There's a facilities guarantee that needs to happen. Our FY twenty-three budget will continue to invest in maintenance and repairs through our operating budget. And we're excited to come back to make critical investments in new facilities through our capital budget. Our cap, quality guarantee will bring more gyms, libraries, auditoriums where they don't already exist. So we start to map out multiple-year investments on both operating and capital. Then finally, it's about enrichment and opportunities for all students, making sure that we have rich, extended learning opportunities to can, we're going to continue to evaluate ESER funding to expand access to things like libraries and athletics. Of course, more information on that will be coming later this year. Boston already has a very long and uh collaborative and engaging uh budget process. As I mentioned, we started in earnest as a finance team internally in October, presenting an update here in December. We will come back to you in February, having worked with each individual school. Between now and February, the finance team will meet with every single school leader, partnered with the Office of Academics, English Learners, Special Education. We have one-on-one conversations with every single school to make sure that we're supporting them in developing a budget that is strategic and meets the needs of their students. We'll come back and in February, March, have multiple conversations with you as a committee where we encourage the community to come out and testify and provide their feedback. The school committee will vote at the end of March and then we become the city council process and budget hearings that go from April through June until the start, until the city council will vote on our budget and then we begin our next fiscal year. Here's a summary of some key deadlines. Part of our interest in transparency and our commitment as a finance team to put in the anti-racist practice of making sure um decision-making processes are more transparent. We have um, we wanted to publish for people when decisions are made and how we um, how they can participate and when they can lend their voice to the process. Last thing I want to cover um before turning it over to you for questions um is something you may have heard about, um but that I formally wanted to tell you about is a proposal that we have um to uh reimagine school funding in Boston. BPS has recognized that our district is changing, that the needs of our students, families and schools looks different than it did ten years ago when we instituted weighted student funding. We, of course, have evolved the weighted student funding uh model, have included new measures of economic need. We've done innovative approaches, things like opportunity index. But we need to do a wholesale community conversation about what are the goals that we have for our schools? What do we want in terms of our funding system for us to be able to achieve at the school level across the district? And then we're going to put it together and come back with a new recommendation for you to consider about how we fund our schools, how we ensure equity and fund that quality guarantee that the superintendent has has talked a lot about. Uh, we want to heavily rely on input from all of you and from the community. So uh for more information about how you can get involved, this is for, for those of you who are watching um at home, please email our budget director, Miriam Rubin. Her email address is on this slide. We really do want to partner with you as a community and partner with individuals to understand how we can better uh fund our schools and how we can improve upon weighted student funding, provide more equity and transparency in our process. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the um chairwoman for um your questions. And thank you again for the opportunity to come um and speak to you this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Cuda, for your report and many thanks to your entire team for their hard work on these challenging issues. And now we'll open it up to the committee for questions. Mr. De Arujio.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Cruder, for this uh very informative presentation. I have a few questions for you and then I have a lot of questions on ESER, so I know Dr. Mitchell is here on that. So uh for you, Mr. Cruder, I just out of curiosity, on the vacancy rates and on the planning on that, I, I, I guess we all know it's a really unusual uh labor market and we've had some kind of And we've had some kind of times during the past 12 months where it looked like it might move in a different direction pretty abruptly. What happens if, if that labor force kind of comes back? You know, maybe three or six months, how do you, how do you account for that or, you know, can you account for that? And, and then what if all of a sudden, you know, those savings that you were anticipating. Kind of, you know, evaporate and maybe go, go into a higher cost area. So that's my, my first question on that.
Yeah, great question. Appreciate that. And I think one of the challenges that we have as a large district is in any given year going into it. I know that we, there will be places that we have under budgeted and other places where we have savings. And in a typical year, those things will offset. And so we may have increased salary savings at a time where we have. Increased transportation costs and those offset. In this case, things are looking particularly good. And so we are trying to fill and staff up and, and including superintendent is looking for ways to create incentives for people to come and work for BPS. Our goal would be to fully staff up and have a zero vacancy rate if we could. If that were to happen, we would, we would be able to manage that and it would not put us in a position. Of financial risk going into, going into the year and close. But part of the reason that we do a monthly update to you and also as an internal team, we review monthly spending and then our projections. Is because these projections can swing in pretty significantly. My first year as budget director in 2015. We had initial projections that looked like we had about a fifteen million dollar gap, which was. A really high gap and we put on a spending and hiring freeze. And it's, it's, it's sort of like stopping an aircraft carrier, right? It just, you can't just slam on the brakes and it stops. Things, things continue. And so what we ended up doing was, was sort of putting on the brakes a little too early. And we ended up with a slightly more funding at the end of the year than we anticipated in that year. So it's, you know, it's, it's constant vigilance from our team and, and sort of. Coming back and continuing to update you so that you know where we are financially and if there are concerns and if we're going to stop spending.
Appreciate that. Very, very good to hear and reassuring on that. Thank you. And then just on, maybe I'll ask, I'll ask another question to you and then I can ask the ESSER questions after. On enrollment, a few questions on that. Appreciate kind of walking through the assumptions and so forth. I've seen folks cite to, to DESI figures and our figures, and it seems that some are, there's a discrepancy. Is there, is there a reason for that or?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a couple of different reasons why you might see numbers reported slightly differently. The first reason is, and DESI, when you look up BPS total enrollment. It reports our Horace Mann charter schools separately from our traditional schools. Our, our, in non-Horace Mann charter schools, our pilot and traditional schools. So schools like EMK and BDA, who you approved the charter amendments for tonight, DESI reports those enrollments separately. So our numbers would total them together. The other piece is oftentimes in the budget process, we're talking about projected enrollment. Not, not our current actual enrollment. And our projected enrollment will always look like we are over projecting. Because we project to the, what we refer to as the high watermark. That is the total number of students we expect to serve in any given grade program over the year. And so we know that there are certain grades and programs that grow throughout the year. And so, and there are other grades and programs that decrease enrollment throughout the year. So the easiest example is early childhood special education grows as we enroll more three-year-olds throughout the year. But general education, our highest numbers are usually in October. So you see that sort of shift. But directionally, usually the DESI numbers and our numbers are very much aligned.
Okay, thank you. As last question, I think you, you addressed, but when you gave us the estimates of the increases and decreases of the largest numbers. Curious to see some of the high schools that had, had increases and I don't know if that's just an estimate as of now. Or you need to, need to pin that down further. Any, any thoughts on that or?
Yeah, certainly. One of the high schools that had a, an increase in enrollment is Brighton High School. There, they have had more students enroll this year. And again, its current enrollment is our biggest predictor of future year. And so when we see a larger cohort come in in ninth grade, we can both project a 10th grade cohort that's bigger. And then we project that same ninth grade cohort the following year. And Madison Park, it's been multiple years of increased enrollment. So that's, that's really seeing students enroll in, throughout the school in multiple years. So we're excited to see that for Madison Park for sure.
Great. Thank you. And I'll ask the next round of my other questions. Thank you.
Others' questions?
Yeah, I have one, another great thorough report, Chief Cruder. Thank you very much. And so I have one question. In the process of review, so you're going, you've done your initial analysis. And then you can start doing the school conversation. At what point is a, are principals formally required to have that conversation with their school site council? Or directly at school-based, you know, to have in the schools? Because in my experience of, over time, sometimes this. Someone, the final budgets get decided. Schools come out, come back very surprised. And I've always thought they, that we missed the opportunity to do some education and maybe get them angry or earlier, but, but. And I didn't see in, in your schedule where that was built in. You're going to meet with the principals and the leadership team. But are they required or do you meet with the actual site councils at one point? Is that built, baked in the bread?
This is a great opportunity for me to introduce somebody who behind the scenes does a lot more of the work than. I give him credit for. My deputy chief financial officer, David Bloom, does a lot of the trainings for the school site councils and with Miriam Rubin, our budget director. I'd love for David, if you could kind of walk people through the timing of the school site council.
Good evening, school committee. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. And I will say, I need to give Miriam full credit for doing the trainings this year. She's been doing those, especially since during the evenings. But from my past experience, school leaders are generally scheduling meetings in January to update their school site council and governing board. It is a required part of their budget process and they are required to return a form to us. That is signed by both the school leader and the school site council co-chairs. We recommend one parent representative and one staff representative. That says they've had their opportunity to review and comment on the budget. And vote on the discretionary portion of the budget as outlined in our Boston Teachers Union contract. So generally, that work is happening in January. Some of our principals have some first meetings in December. But usually principals need those couple of weeks of December to just get their feet under them with the information. Ask any questions they have, prepare their materials. And there's also a 10-day sort of notification period for materials as well to the school site council. So the meetings tend to happen in January with some bleeding into February.
That's great. And I just recommend as we go forward that maybe write that into, that you meet with the principals and the school site council. So demonstrably that cooperation that you're doing is recognized in the process. That'd be in our goal to reflect. That we are opening and connecting with, with families, et cetera. Be nice to lift that up in the documents. But thank you very much.
Dr. Coleman.
And you do a great job of supporting David. You've always given him great credit. And we know that if you walk away, we're not going to fall apart.
Dr. Coleman, it's not required right now that by policy that schools consult with their equity roundtables. But it is an expectation that we're setting with our school leaders that they should review the plans with their equity roundtables as well. Other questions? I'll circle back to you, Mr. De Arujio.
Yes, I thought, did Ms. Plonk Garcia have her hand up? Sorry, but I can.
Ms. Plonk Garcia, did you, you put your hand down? Do you still have a question?
No, let me put in in Spanish, English. No, realmente, yeah, era, yo iba a hablar era de los comités, del comité ejecutivo de la escuela. Que tienen un papel muy importante también en el conocimiento del presupuesto y cuando el señor Coleman. Habló, mi pregunta iba basada en eso, en la importancia que tiene que los padres se involucren en la escuela y en los comités ejecutivos.
Yeah, well, my question was about the executive committee and the role that they have, the important role that they have in the budget. Mr. Coleman had mentioned that. So I was asking about the importance of the participation of the parents.
Pero quiero valorar en el reporte que han tomado en cuenta. Me encanta eso a los estudiantes que no tienen hogar. Eso es un tema que me toca mucho particularmente.
But I do want to value that it was included in the report about the people who are homeless. That's a topic that is so close to me.
Es bien importante y el hecho de que lo tomen en cuenta para mí vale mucho. Al igual que mucho en la comunidad han estado pidiendo apoyo socioemocional, más trabajadores sociales. Y vamos, estoy ansiosa por esperar esto y ojalá que podamos ver materializado todo esto porque es un gran valor para la comunidad. Lo felicito, felicito a la superintendente y al señor Nae Kure de que han podido tomar en cuenta esta parte que es tan importante para la comunidad.
It is very important that you have taken that into account. As I've mentioned, that the community needs emotional support, more social workers. So I hope we can slowly materialize all of this. I just want to congratulate you and the superintendent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I, I just wanted to highlight and, and thank you for your advocacy around our homeless students or students experiencing homelessness. That was one of the changes we've made in, in the last few years to how we fund schools. If you look on each individual school's allocation on the weighted student funding page. You'll see the number of estimated homeless students at that school. And so there is allocation to support those students. And they work with Brian Marks and his team to come up with a, an action plan for how they can support those students. We also have, that's one of those where we have a concentration weight as well. Meaning for schools that have a high percentage of students who are experiencing homelessness. In this case, it's, it's, it meant to be an estimate for one homeless student per class. That there's an additional allocation for those students, for those schools. And, and that's all something where, where schools have to come and present a plan for how to support them. So. That was an, you know, an addition that we made to our funding model a few years ago and one that will be important to consider going forward as well.
Yo tengo una pregunta de seguimiento en ese sentido y es la parte operativa. O sea, estos estudiantes que no tienen hogar, operativamente, quién sería, no sé si ahora tendrías la respuesta. Quién sería el family liaison? Quién sería la persona que le daría seguimiento a este, a esta familia sin hogar, a este estudiante sin hogar? A través, cómo van a navegar esto?
I have a follow-up question regarding that, about overseeing or the operator who's administering all of this. If, is there a follow-up with the family liaison or who is going to follow up with the homeless student?
Yeah, the, I would, I would certainly defer to Brian Marks and his team in terms of their student supports. I know that part of the action planning that the schools need to do is to figure out what is the best. Way to support the students within their community. And I know, as you know, I've spent a lot of time at the Blackstone recently and I've seen some of the things that that school does to support. Families experiencing homelessness and really students with economic disadvantage in general. There's a, there's a resource room for families with clothes and supplies in there as well. Some, some schools do that. Some schools will provide a stipend to staff members to do targeted outreach and support. So there's a lot of different ways that schools will support. Their students, but it, and it's meant to be really community-driven, really sort of school-specific and because they know their students best. So I would, you know, encourage, I think Brian has done some, some presentations at the school committee, but. As we get into the budget process, certainly would, would love to highlight his work. And we can bring him and we start talking about central supports for schools as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. De Arujio?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So ESSER, ESSER funding, and I was hoping maybe we could go to. I thought it was a really helpful chart about the timeline for dispersment. I don't know if Mr. Cruder, you can pull, pull that back up. And.
Or I. I'm, I'm realizing how long my presentation was as it takes me a minute to find this slide.
Well, I can, I can just start, I'm ready to start my, my process while, while you do that. I don't want to hold, hold this up, but. So seeing the timeline there, I just, kind of just trying to collect my thoughts on this, but. If you can help, perfect, thank you. So help me to understand here where, who, what schools are, are fully funded? What schools are partially funded? Who, whose applications are approved? Who's, who's waiting for approval? I've talked to some schools to get an understanding of the plans they submitted. Some fantastic, by the way. And I think some, some really great work and, and at least for me, that what the money was intended to do for this year. And beyond. So very happy to see that. Other schools, they have plans, not, not been approved yet. Other schools, no plans. Some schools getting money this month, not getting money. So can you help us understand kind of systematically, like how, how is this working across our schools? And if you can address those, those questions, please.
Absolutely. Why don't I take this one?
Ms. Mitchell, thank you.
He's a day of Asia. So the first thing to note is that we had three rounds of school funding. To allow schools to apply for their fund, to, to develop and submit their funding proposals at the best time of the school year for them. And a lot of them were really busy at the beginning of the year, staffing up. And also determining priorities to present to their community equity roundtables. Which was a, which was a requirement for developing their and, and reviewing their priorities for ESSER funding. In round one, schools did not have to submit a full plan for their ESSER investments. They could submit some partial. Items that were not necessarily aligned to their full plan, which they had not yet had time to develop. They submitted their requests in August for some emergency investments like. Hiring new staff, like English language teachers, learning, teachers for English language learners, enrichment activities. Other, and other pandemic recovery supports. Forty-five schools applied during round one and all were funded. That represents thirty-nine point eight of their schools. For rounds two and three, because of a high level of. Interest and investment in making sure that these funds were leveraged well, we did require. A complete school plan. So that's a quality school plan in most schools. It's a transformation or turnaround plan. In our schools that have that status, it's their innovation plan for innovation schools and so on. The plan had to be, the proposal that they submitted for the use of ESSER funds had to be aligned to that plan. So the first. Time that they had to submit for the complete amount of their funds was for round two. And only 15 schools applied for that round. That was only thirteen point two percent. We did expect more. We did expect more schools to apply for that round. When we completed that round, we opened up the next round, which was round three. And the majority of our schools applied during that round. So ninety-eight schools applied, which is eighty-six point seven percent of our schools. So we had a rush of applications at one time. And the all plans that were submitted by the extended deadline of November the twenty-fourth that were approvable were approved. And so that's a total of eighty-four schools that have been approved in rounds one, two, and three. And those that were not approvable with the criteria set, again, determined by the community in our engagements, including the school guidance and in the proposal template that they submitted, those that aren't in approval are in revision status. And we've been supporting those schools to get there, making sure that some of the common revision needs were well-supported. So, for example, some schools needed help, ensuring that their plans, their school plans were well-aligned to their budget proposals, that they had the equity and opportunity assurances in place to meet the needs of all of their students, and had the kind of budget justifications and specificity that would allow us to determine whether it was ESER fundable and also that we could allocate the right amount of money to it. So I could tell you more about the process. It's probably for a longer presentation, but it involved extensive review and alignment across the district. One thing we prioritized is we had to ensure that we understood and coordinated our district-level investments first. Because we did not want schools to spend their ESER funding on investments that the district was planning on paying for out of the different central office departments. So at the same time that schools were submitting their proposals, we were also assessing and reviewing proposals from the central department offices that were working to address the needs identified during our ESER planning process, which was, of course, based on our strategic plan, but had a lot of community input about how we're going to leverage these funds. Unlike schools, where a hundred percent of the schools, we guaranteed funding, only thirty-eight percent of the central office proposals were identified as priorities for funding. And then we worked to, there was a total of a hundred and nineteen proposals across central office, which we reviewed. We also reviewed those against our school-level proposals so that we could see what kind of match there was between the needs that schools identified for the funding and those that we could pay for out of district funds. And that's really a high-level overview. I could go more into our process in terms of our guidance documents, our rubrics that met community expectations and how we worked across the division to make sure that any staffing requests were able to be responded to by OHC, budget requests by finance departments, the finance division and all of the other divisions. But I think what you were really looking for is some clarity on where schools were now. And every week, we are getting school proposals that needed revisions in and we are continuing to provide support and approving their funds. About, it takes about two weeks from the time that their proposals are approved for their budgets to be loaded into their school budgets. And so that's the process. Did I answer your question?
Ms. Mitchell, thank you very much. I appreciate walking through all this. Well, a few things that I could question and recommendation is that, one, I was trying to write down your numbers, but then I kind of, you know, it was tough. So I would appreciate, I think it'd be helpful for us to have, to have better oversight, to kind of see that school-by-school breakdown, you know, where schools are. I'm sure I'm not the only member on the committee who's gotten calls from schools that are in very different places or from families that are saying, hey, you know, we were told at the beginning of the year, we would get this money, you know, where's this money? Especially for the subsequent rounds. You know, it's December, our hope was at the beginning of this that these resources would be distributed to the schools as quickly as possible and appropriately, with proper oversight and the plans that are, you know, as you stated, going through all that proper process. And it'd be helpful for our oversight to kind of have like a data slide that we can kind of see, you know, see where things are. And also to see if we can understand better, you know, what are the bottlenecks? So if we hear from a school, is it, you know, did they not apply on time? Did they not go through, you know, the checklist process? Was there not enough specificity in application? Is there not enough staff reviewing to kind of understand what needs to work here so that at the end of the day, these dollars get to where they're supposed to go? And then also just, you know, the, so we, you know, the school committee, we should understand the purpose that these dollars are being used for. We've asked in the past to understand the plans from each school. I asked, I think in a previous meeting about for use for, you know, EL students, you know, what are the dollars being used for? I've heard from schools directly, some really creative uses. And I'm very happy to hear it. I'm excited to see what impacts those uses can have, will have. But getting it in dribs and drabs, it'd be great to see it, you know, maybe in a subsequent meeting, a presentation, having that data and helping us walk through, you know, the very helpful kind of statistics and data that you just walked through with us would be helpful as well.
Absolutely. One question I can, that you posed, that I can answer for you right now, just a high-level overview. And we are continuing to analyze how the proposals submitted by schools will impact different subgroups, since that was one of our highest standards. And so I really appreciate that you especially called out how we were ensuring that schools support English language learners and what those investments are. And so just to give you a preview, eighty-six percent of the schools with their investments for English language learners focused on investments in culturally relevant grade-level text and curriculum and to increase access to grade-level standards for ELLs by investing in adult capacity building. Twenty-five percent provided stipends to staff for programming and supplemental academic services. Forty-one percent had investments targeted to expand and strengthen family community partnerships to support English language learners. And twenty-one percent invested in support staff to increase teacher capacity, to have one-to-one or small group sessions with students for intervention. So that's a very lot, high-level summary of the proposed investments we had to date at the time we did that analysis. There were a hundred and two schools involved in that analysis. But to your point, and we'd only be able to do that kind of analysis with the kind of careful review process that you mentioned. And I really appreciate that you've been one of the people that have been really holding us all to that high-level standard to make sure we are doing due diligence. I heard the good points you needed about the data that you were looking for, and I'll be working on that. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, thank you very much.
Thank you. Others? Ms. LaPera.
Thank you, Chairwoman Robinson. If Ms. Mitchell is still on the screen, wonderful. I want to just echo some of the points that a committee member, Deir Usho, has brought up. I'm seeking a point of clarity here. I know you mentioned that there was round one, round two, and round three. And with the round one being focused more on emergency funding for not full proposals that were submitted by schools, with the round two, which I believe the deadline for that was in October. I believe. You mentioned that there's a, not a lag time, but a period of time after approval in which it takes about two weeks to have that be reflected in the budget. With the schools that did submit their proposals with the round two back in the fall, at this point, have those schools that were approved, have they received their funds to be able to invest at the school level?
Yes.
They have. Okay, yeah, I think it would be, I'm hearing conflicting information from folks in the schools. And so I think it would just be really helpful to get the list of what's come in, what's the status of applications? Because we are getting, I am getting outreach from, as Mr. Deir Usho mentioned, school staff, families wanting to understand what is the status of these pieces. And so it would be great if we're all on the same page on what has actually transpired at this point.
Absolutely, and it might be helpful to know some of the reasons why some of these perceptions exist. So one reason is that schools receive either full or partial funding after their approvals. And that can be for a number of reasons. So, for example, if they intend to use their funds to improve their buildings, facilities improvements have to go through additional prioritization because we have to review their facilities proposal to make sure it was its price right. It takes the experts in our operations division to make sure that we have the right estimates and also prioritize it on the maintenance schedule. We are completing, or I should say BPS, that division is completing a building assessment. And so that's part of the prioritization. And then we have to go back to the school and let them know how long it'll take for their particular facilities request to be prioritized in light of all of the other needs for all of the other buildings. If they are not, we are not able to schedule that particular facilities investment in the right time for the ESER funding, then we have to ship those funds back. So that's an example where they might have received partial funding, but not all of the funding for a particular budget request. Another piece of, another nuance that is confusing to some people who are hearing from schools is that Horace Mann Charter Schools receive their funds directly from the state. So we submitted our ESER three plan. And we are still, for example, and we're still waiting for the state that has some more questions about our plan, some details that we need to provide because of the complexity of the district. Whereas a Horace Mann Charter School that applied at the same time may have already received their ESER three funds. And so each school is going to experience this a little differently.
Thank you for that. I think that's helpful context. I've heard it in the context around some schools wanting to engage in out-of-school-time additional programming and not having the ability to begin to engage with that. And so I think any information that you can share as the status for where each individual school is, that would just be really helpful. So thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Coleman? Oh, we keep popping over. Okay. Mr. O'Neil? No questions? Anyone else? I had a question around the declining enrollment, particularly around the preschool kindergarten. And I guess the main question is, are they going elsewhere in Boston? Do we know, or are they leaving the city? Because I know that there are more opportunities with charter schools, starting early childhood programs, parochial schools. So there's more choice for parents. So the question is, is it more Boston-based choice or leaving? Or do we know?
That's a great, great question. I can tell you what we do know on that data. And I would just say typically, we do, as the LEA that's responsible for knowing whether or not every student in Boston, school-aged child is enrolled in school. We do have numbers each spring on the total enrollment across the different settings. So we are aware of the total enrollments, but it's a very lagging indicator. So we will continue to dive into that data. Largely speaking, we are seeing fewer students residing in Boston overall. That it's not just about students choosing other options. And for charter schools in particular, we, for a decade or more, as charter schools grew in Boston, we really did see a shift in where our students enrolled. And this also affected parochial schools across. But that has largely, as charter schools have hit their cap, that impact has started to stabilize and our, what we refer to as our capture rate has stayed basically the same. But we do know that school-aged children is declining across all sectors. And so in order for us to regain our total enrollment, we would have to regain our capture rate. And we attribute that to a lot of the factors around immigration, a lot of the factors around housing costs. You know, the three big factors for inflation right now are household housing costs, the cost of utilities, and the cost of food. And so those are all affecting our families and across the city. So it's something we continue to watch. But also in full transparency, this is the last thing I should say about this, but we need to do more to understand our families and to get more qualitative and survey data to complement the enrollment data that we looked at. We can sort of see what happened, but we don't often know the answer of why. And that's something that we've been talking about. How do we get better information with the why? Particularly as we start to explore our redesign and our reconfigurations.
Ms. Harris, Ms. Harris, Ms. Robinson. I was just going to just comment that, you know, with our preschool kids not coming in, you know, I tell Nate all the time, you build it, they'll come. You know, I think that our young families really want to see us have early childhood programs. And they've also told me directly, over and over again, since day one that I come, that I came, we need before and after-school programs. If we don't have, if we don't have before and after-school programs, if we don't have preschool programs, young families choose other schools or they don't live in the city. This is critical for us in terms of a pro-enrollment strategy that Nate shared before. And unfortunately, our buildings are about ninety-five percent at capacity for adding more UPK. That's what the early childhood Jason Sacks has shared with me. And so I think one thing that we can do, and you've heard me talk about it a couple times now, is look at our K-8 schools as we solidify our pathways and give our high schools, the seventh and eighth grader, eighth graders, and add more preschool in its place. I just think that that could be a strategy that we could speak to our parents about as well.
Okay. And... Go ahead, Ms. LaPera.
Sorry, just to that point, I did notice that in when the lists of schools around the projected notable enrollment shifts, the middle column has a significant number, I mean, those are significant shifts and decreases. There's also a lot of K to eight schools listed in that column. And so thank you for that. One of my questions was, what is it that we're trying to do to mitigate some of that? And do we anticipate that this enrollment, these enrollment shifts are going to get better or worse as we're thinking about the K through six, seven through twelve configuration? So just thinking through that out.
Yeah, I think also, Ms. LaPera, one of the other things that Chief Cuda brought up is just the fluctuations that we have in housing and what's happening in our housing situation here. So that also will determine just how many young families are able to afford to live in Boston. And so that's a challenge for us as well. But having early childhood has so many benefits to our schools. But having early childhood has so many benefits to, to our schools. The research is so clear that if you have early childhood programs in your schools, you get better outcomes for children. They, it becomes a whole transformation strategy to link early childhood, pre-K through grade three. And so, and it also is a way to catch students with disabilities a lot earlier and provide additional supports to them much earlier so that we can support them in their learning journeys throughout the school, that they're with us. See, Tiffany has her hand up.
Yes.
Yeah. I just wanted to agree on that point. And with my experience of my brother going to kindergarten here and elementary school here, and my own experience going to B P S and trying to apply to preschool when I was much younger, it's practically a very long waiting list for families to get on to those preschool programs for, from B P S. And oftentimes, we end up going to private childcare providers instead. And I feel like having that type of continuation from preschool all the way into elementary school and having that new system of seven through twelve, it would improve the amount of students in our school system way more and continuing on their education rather than diverting to other private institutions.
I think you're absolutely right. I would, I would just note one thing that you just sort of highlighted. These things change over time, but perceptions of access are really sticky. And so, you know, I know that, you know, I have a son who's now in fourth grade and a daughter who's in K two. And even since I applied for a K one seat for my son in, in the Rosendale area, access has improved significantly so that most families will get get a seat in a K one program, but that's not the perceived feeling. And so what we need to do is really help people understand how much access they already have. And then as the superintendent mentioned, continue to expand that access. We were just talking the other day about what it would take for us to guarantee a K one seat in B P S for all students, because we are getting closer with enrollment shifts. The challenge there will be, we think as soon as you guarantee it, more families will stick around and take it up. And so we'll have to build more capacity. So that's that part of the, the superintendent's, you know, K one of dreams, the, if you build it, they will come. And so we are looking for ways to add more capacity and then to shout it from literally the rooftop of every school that, hey, we've got you, you know, universal K one, come to B P S, we guarantee it. It's gonna be great. And, and some of the hard work that we need to do over the next year. So that at this point next year, we're starting to announce some of those shifts and starting to see expanded capacity.
You're on mute, you're on mute, Ms. Robinson.
All right. Sorry. As the federal government begins to look at preschool for three and four-year-olds to build back better, does that give us some opportunity as a school district? But even so, as a city, because we have been very dedicated to making sure that there are multiple pathways and options for families, you know, and have had a mixed delivery system. And so the, the question is, how do we continue to honor and support that as a mechanism for family choice, but making sure all options are really high-quality ones?
Yeah, absolutely. And I know that, you know, we do look at the high-quality rating systems here as well in Boston. And I know that the mayor has plans to reinstitute the children's cabinet, and I believe that this will be an issue that they will address and, and pay attention to in terms of overall early childhood opportunities prior to U P K. You know, obviously, we have when I got here, I think we had eight hundred or so. I think we have like six hundred and fifty students still left on the waitlist for four-year-olds. And I think, you know, if we could get those forty or so classrooms, you know, we could serve every single one of those four-year-olds and then really try to reach back even further and get our students who are age three who need additional support and services.
Great. Thank you. So again, Nate, thank you so much for your report. And the committee looks forward to many future updates starting in February, when we kick off the budget season. And, and we'll have many, many more detailed questions for you then. Thank you so much.
Looking forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll now move on to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comments on reports.
Right. Thank you. Any new business? Mr. DeRusio?
I'm Jeremy. May I be so bold as to propose new business at my last, my last public meeting? And also just letting to, to presage what I'll be doing on the other side. I, I've raised before the issue of native language instruction. We actually heard some, you know, two, two good comments and concerning comments from, from families in East Boston earlier tonight to propose to my, you know, my colleagues here to, to really wrestle with the policy issues a, a, as a committee. I know folks have expressed different views and understandings and so forth. Even me, I just trying to get the learning curve, the history of where we started in the, in the, you know, in the nineties, two thousands and the difference statutory changes and differences in kind of understanding what works, but doesn't work. So he's proposed that, yeah, to wrestle with that. And in that context of all the other look at and policy issues, and I know Mayor Wu has, you know, expressed a lot of, you know, concern and support for that as well. So I respectfully submit that as, as new business. Thank you.
Yeah, I would be interested in that as well, because I know in the last couple of years, we've started several dual-language programs, one in Haitian Creole and a new one in Vietnamese. And it would be great to be able to get a sense of those things as well as the ongoing work we've done in other languages. So yes, thank you. We'll look at that as we're putting together our calendar for next year. Well, at this point, that concludes our business for this evening. The school committee will hold its annual organizational meeting on Monday, January third at five P M on Zoom, at which time the committee will elect offices and approve the twenty-twenty-two meeting calendar. The calendar will be posted on the B P S webpage once it's approved. And then the next regular school committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January twelfth at six P M. If there's no further, if there's nothing further, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the mo, to the motion? Hearing none. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, and have a great holiday season, everyone.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes, and thank you, everyone.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Blanco Garcia? Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, and thanks again to Mr. DeRusio and Dr. Coleman for their service to the students of the Boston Public Schools. You will be missed and much appreciated.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you. Ditto. And this meeting is adjourned. Good night. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Holidays. Wait till we come back for public comment.
Can hardly wait. I know you'll be there.